Time being six o'clock, I call the November 19th, 2025 Town Council meeting to order. Depart for a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Note to residents, all citizens are welcome to attend public meetings in person to view the live meeting remotely. Citizens are encouraged to watch the live stream on Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel or the live broadcast on Comcast Channel 9 of Verizon 29. To listen to the meeting remotely, citizens may call in using the number 1-929-205-6099. I'll say it again, 1-29-205-6099. To participate in the meeting remotely, citizens may join in Zoom webinar using the information provided below. Meetings are recorded and archived in Franklin TV on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel and shown repeatedly on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon 29. Announcements from the chair. This meeting is being recorded by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon 29. This meeting may be recorded by others. Tonight, I believe Councilor Cormier Ledger is participating remotely. So Ted, are you here?
He's here.
Hola amigos.
Yeah, he is in Spain. So upcoming town events, we have, the Town Council will be holding office hours tomorrow, November 20th at 8:30 a.m. at the Franklin Senior Center. The Second Annual A-Reef of Franklin is taking place on December 13th from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Over 20 pop-up vendors will be at the Black Box and several stores downtown will also be participating. Citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda in compliance with Chapter 30A, Section 20, the open meeting law. The council cannot engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizens' comments. The council may ask the town administrator to review the matter. Nothing herein shall prevent the town administrator from correcting a misstatement in fact. So, do we have any citizens in the audience? Mark, name and address, please.
Thank you. Mark Minne Kelly, 31 Longfellow Drive in Franklin. Thank you Chairman Delorko, Town Councilors Administrator Helen. First, let me once again thank each of you for your countless hours and energy that you give and will give to this town. In past meetings, I have requested that the Town Council review the status of the subsidized housing inventory, the SHI, in Franklin. I've suggested that the Town Council should develop a targeted level of SHI for various town boards and developers to be aware of and to move forward rather than only being concerned that Franklin simply meet the minimum 10% standard set by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I believe Chairman Mercer had agreed to add this topic to one of the Town Council's future meeting agendas, which I appreciated, but it has not yet happened. Tonight, I'd like to again propose an idea for your consideration, especially since you're a new council. As you're probably aware, the Commonwealth requires most communities to meet or exceed a threshold of 10% of units to be on the subsidized housing inventory, which Franklin has already exceeded. But maybe you're not aware of how that SHI percentage is calculated. Did you know that, for example, for a new 40B rental housing project of 265 units, which has 63 affordable units, that all 265 units are counted towards the subsidized housing inventory percentage? I guess there were reasons to set up the SHI calculation that way, but Franklin's current SHI of 11.05%, which is as of September 2025 by the state data, does not actually mean that 11.05% of the units in Franklin are affordable or income restricted. My proposal to the Town Council is, again, is that Franklin adopt a new metric or target for the town, something I might call the ASHI, or the actual subsidized housing inventory, that only counts the actual number of units which are affordable in each rental project rather than the total number of units, including market rate units. Still report the SHI to the state, but use real data for our own tracking purposes. Only with the real numbers can we use this metric to understand our progress towards making Franklin a more affordable place to live. And as a starting point, I'd recommend setting this new target and a new metric of the actual subsidized housing inventory to 10%. Seems like a reasonable starting point for our community to strive for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anybody else in council chambers?
Dave Callahan, 30 Plains Street, here with another update for the Franklin School Committee. So last night, we had our first meeting of the new term, and we kind of kicked things right off with elections for Chair and Vice Chair. Last night, I was able to proudly nominate Paul Griffith as Chair, and he had nominated me as Vice Chair, and both had passed unanimously through the school committee. We also, at the start of each of our meetings, when we do the pledge, we have pledged students from Franklin Public Schools kind of come on in and get recognized for some great achievements that they're doing, and then lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Last night, it was an absolute perfect start because what we had was five kiddos from Miss Doherty's 4th grade class at Washington Street. Each of those kids came from the five former elementary schools that we had. And I thought it was just, it was so, really kind of almost poetic. The last term, we spent the last two years doing an incredibly heavy lift of an entire reorganization and redistrict across all of our schools. Now with this new term, we have all of those kiddos under one or four roofs now kind of like learning and working together, and it was amazing to see that. We also kind of got down to business, and we had an MCAS-related policy discussion that we had to have. So when voters in Massachusetts voted to take away the MCAS as like a graduation requirement, we were left in the districts all around in the Commonwealth to fill that void. And so what that meant was the Superintendent's Office and Franklin Public School staff had to come up with policy requirements and procedures of what graduation and competency determinations are in the absence of MCAS that had existed since 2003. The gist of it, and you'll, you kind of hear me talk about it a lot over the next probably couple of years, is when, what was happening with all of this is that this is bandwidth and resources to develop the policies and the procedures by the Superintendent's Office, that they then have to kind of work with DESI and kind of have a back-and-forth discussion to continue to adopt it and make sure that it's all onboard. And then, if there's appeal processes, all of that, if there was an appeal process with MCAS, would be handled by the state. Now that's entirely being done by the district. And despite all of these additional responsibilities and resources, there was $0 brought into line item 300 from the state. These are often, you know, you might hear from, talk about unfunded mandates, whether it's most recently dyslexia screening, there's curriculum changes, transportation costs, special education, so many mandates kind of done at the state level to say this is how the schools have to operate without any funding to kind of follow through with that. And so it's really kind of emblematic of the issue where you look at it and you say, you know what, how come the schools cost X right now to teach a public school kid in 2025? That's not what it was when I went to school or when my parents went to school, my grandparents went to school. A lot of it is because of these unfunded mandates that the state is requiring, that they were not requiring or weren't even in existence decades before, that we just kind of have to absorb. And it's difficult. And then, last and well, kind of close, you know, again, I saw a couple of Town Councilors online with us last night. Please continue to kind of come, join us. Our next meeting is December 9th, and my wife said if you have any requests for cookies, she'll happily have that in advance. Thank you guys all very much.
Thank you, Dave. It's a bad word, unfunded mandates, if you're sitting with us. Okay, we got approval of minutes.
Oh, we are continuing citizens' comments.
Oh, is there anybody else? Oh, I thought, I thought everybody, no, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Celia Cartwright, 213 Peck Street. First of all, congratulations to all of the Town Council members on your election. The town spoke for change, and as a result, we've received an almost entirely new Town Council. I know one of the things that I thought about as I went to vote was to end the mistrust that we had, that had been caused by many councilors in the previous council repeatedly giving airtime to rumors and then rarely or never correcting them afterwards. And this caused the rumors and misinformation to persist. I don't know how we go about reestablishing trust between the council and the citizens of Franklin if we are continuing to spread falsehoods. I had heard that rumors were spreading around the Senior Center, the police station, the fire department, about the Superintendent's Office being moved to Kennedy. I was giving everyone the benefit of the doubt that this was being spread by the people we had now voted out of office. To my surprise, found from Mr. Earl's article, which was recently published in The Observer, that it wasn't just councilors that we had voted out of office, but it was several of the people now seated here in the council. He debunked the rumors by simply visiting this building and seeing for himself that the Superintendent's Office had not been moved. Now, I understand that possibly the Peter, the counselor who, the former counselor, who we probably voted out because of the lack of trust, but we put you in to try to correct this. That is why we put you in. So if it's an honest mistake, please own up to it and correct it. Because we, the people in Franklin, we're paying attention to this stuff, we're watching, we're listening, and we're going to hold you to it. Stop spreading rumors that you have not verified. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Steve Sherlock, 13 Magnolia, City Community Information Director, Franklin Mazz, Franklin Public Radio. Spoke last time at your first session about the proper use of the microphone. Within 15 minutes of sitting down, people were texting me, your neighbors, our neighbors, that some of you were not abiding by it. So I need to be careful and remind you again, please use the microphone. It's your best friend. So eventually, people don't text you, and they just text me. I offered as a possibility at the school committee last night, when I mentioned it to them as well, that it might be useful to have a little fun with it and see who does better, school committee or town council. It's open, and I know you're new to this. It's a little bit of a show. This is a studio. You're a little nervous, getting used to it. I'm patient. I am very patient. Please use the microphones. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Name and address, please.
Kim Mouchell, 4 Barwood Road.
Good job, Mark.
Kim Mouchell, 4 Barwood Road. And it's been cold recently, wouldn't you say?
Yes.
So just a gentle reminder that we're, that New England Chapel has partnered with Community Closet at Franklin United Methodist Church, and we're doing the Second Annual Communitywide Colt Drive. And you can drop off coats either at either of the two churches, the main fire station, the police station, or the Hockamok YMCA. Right now, our biggest donor box is Hockamok YMCA. We've already collected 150 coats, but we're nowhere near the 600 that we got last year, and there will be a coat giveaway. We're collecting coats through Saturday, December the 6th. But anything is appreciated, and thank you for helping keeping our neighbors warm.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Just name and address, please.
Lynn O'Brien, 16 Homzev. Just briefly, I've been here a few times that we can't set. If you could consider a new place to have these meetings, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? How about anybody in Zoom land? You see anybody, June? Nothing? Okay, moving on. Need a motion to accept approval of minutes for October 22nd, 2025?
Motion to accept the minutes.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Allegions. Okay, roll call, obviously, roll call, vote.
Cormier Ledger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Ujuku?
Yes.
Griffith, yes. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Morinjello?
Yes.
Callaway Trip?
Yes.
Grelle?
Yes.
And Delorko?
Yes. Motion passes. Accept the motion on October, for the minutes, approval of minutes, October 29th, 2025?
Motion to accept the minutes, October 29th, second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. No discussion, we'll take a vote on the approval of minutes on October 29th, 2025.
Cormier Ledger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Ujuku?
Yes.
Griffith, yes. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Morinjello?
Yes.
Callaway Trip?
Yes.
Grelle?
Yes.
Delorko?
Yes. Motion passes. We have no proclamations of recognitions. We have appointments. Cultural Council, Elizabeth O'Day. Clerk will read the appointment. Yeah, but we do them separate, right?
It's one resolution for all three.
Why did we do that? All right. In the Finance Committee, Jennifer D'Angelo. Historical Commission, Brendan Carrico. Clerk will read the appointment.
The Town Administrator has appointed the following individuals to serve on town committees with terms to become effective November 19th, 2025, and to expire as stated below. Cultural Council, Elizabeth O'Day, 2 Junoway, term expires June 30th, 2028. Finance Committee, Jennifer D'Angelo, 34 Wachusett Street, term expires June 30th, 2027. Historical Commission, Brandon Carrico, 24 Anna Road, term expires June 30th, 2027. Motion to ratify the appointments by the Town Administrator of the individuals named above to serve on town committees with terms to become effective November 19th, 2025, and to expire as stated above.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Discussion, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think that it's important for the Town Administrator to continue to make recommendations for Finance Committee. In order to be consistent with the Town Charter, could be made clear in the future resolutions for Finance Committee appointments that the Town Council is the appointing authority, not the Town Administrator.
Jamie?
Yeah. So that is generally, that is in the Town Charter. I think historically, for well before I got here, the Town Council would ask me to work with the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee would vet the candidates. They'd come back through me to you. I think what Max is maybe saying is a bit of a terminology thing, but we're happy to take that into consideration. But that's generally been the process. I know.
It's always been the process since I've been here.
He's absolutely correct. I'm just pointing out that.
Yeah, he's correct. Because we don't, we don't interview the people.
You've always deferred to the Finance Committee to basically pick the votes. If you don't want to defer, in the future, y'all can do the interviews for multiple candidates and go through that exercise yourself. So that is something you could do if you wanted to.
Thank you. I just want to make, like, just in the resolution, just say it's the Town Council. I think it's good for the Town Administrator to make those recommendations. I just want to make sure that we maintain that it is our authority to do that if we desire in the future.
So we have a motion and a second. Just want to say thank you to everyone for stepping up. So, do I have a quote?
Cormier Ledger?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Ujuku?
Yes.
Griffith, yes. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Morinjello?
Yes.
Callaway Trip?
Yes.
Grelle?
Yes.
Delorko?
Yes. Motion passing. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up. We have no public hearings tonight, no licensed transactions. Presentation and discussions, we have none. So the right to legislation for action. First resolution is Resolution 25-71, adoption of Chapter 32B, Section 21-23 for the purpose of the towns participating in Group Insurance Commission.
Whereas, whereas the Town of Franklin currently provides health insurance benefits to its eligible employees, retirees, and their dependents under the provisions of MGL Chapter 32B, and whereas MGL Chapter 32B, Section 21 through 23 authorizes cities and towns to adopt a local option, enabling them to provide health insurance through the Group Insurance Commission, GIC, and whereas participation in the GIC may provide the town and its employees and retirees with access to a range of high-quality health insurance plans, the benefit of statewide group purchasing power, and potential cost savings to both the town and the plan participants, and whereas the members of the Insurance Advisory Committee, IAC, have unanimously agreed that participation in the GIC would be advantageous for the town and school employees and retirees. Now, therefore, be it resolved, one, that the Town of Franklin hereby adopts MGL Chapter 32B, Section 21 through 23, for the purpose of participating in the GIC. Two, the Town Administrator is authorized to take all actions necessary for Town of Franklin to join the GIC, including executing an agreement with the Public Employee Committee, PEC, and notifying the GIC of the intent to join on July 1st, 2026, fiscal year 2027, for a period of not less than three years. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2571?
Have a motion, second. Have a second. Discussion. I'm going to go to Jamie first. Jamie?
Sure. Through, Mr. Chairman, through you to the council. So, you know, I wrote a fairly lengthy memo on this. I know for many folks, employee health insurance is something that's very new. You know, I've pointed in here some links to all of our previous budget narratives, on trends and data sets. I didn't want to put out like so much that it was overwhelming. Our healthcare consultants, Ken and Rusty, are here with us tonight to answer any questions folks may have. Also, our HR Director and benefit staff are here as well. I know the Superintendent and the school HR Director, Ken Storolazi, are also here. This has been a long battle. Healthcare, I think, as all of you know, is not something that's going away anytime soon. The big beautiful bill and the government shutdown are going to force extraordinarily cost pressures on all private and public sector insurance plans. From our vantage point, this is unquestionably the right time to move to the GIC. There's a couple of points I'd like to make with that. Couple of the advantages. One of the biggest struggles is Councilor Cormier Ledger and Councilor Delorko know have been with our what's called loss runs. You know, pre-pandemic, our loss runs were fairly good and competitive and gave us pretty good rates. If we went out to bid for a private insurer like Harvard Pilgrim, TOF, or anybody, we would generally get those bids. Since the pandemic, like many places, consumer healthcare has gone through the roof. Costs have gone through the roof. We went out for an open bid last year, for example, and we didn't get one single healthcare provider in Massachusetts that bid on the town because of our loss runs. For folks that don't know what loss runs are, our loss runs as an organization are about 110%, which means for every dollar in premium the town and employee pays, the healthcare provider pays a dollar 10. So they lose money on us. So the biggest advantage for rate stability in the future is the fact that by joining the GIC, GIC, there are about a half a million people subscribed on there. So we're spreading out our town's risk among a much, much bigger pool. Number two, if there were the unknowns down the road with whatever goes on at the federal government and however those cost pressures put on Massachusetts, the state has a lot more money to be able to fund the GIC system than we do here locally, which is hugely important. As you get into the budget debate, you will see, we already plugged in about a 14% increase. That's probably going to be higher by the time we get out of this in a few months. Some of the other benefits are, we have maxed out our, we've maxed out our opportunities with a qualified high deductible option. We've done that for seven years. It's been very successful with employees having a health savings account. However, the deductibles are now completely unaffordable for our employees. They're now $5,000 for a family. By joining the GIC, our deductible option will be $1,000. So that's actually a huge advantage to our folks. Rates are actually fairly close to the GIC to what we currently have, and oftentimes, some of the coverage options that are there is actually better coverage. There's far more choice with the GIC. There's eight plans for actives and four plans for retirees, which is huge because right now, we only have two choices for folks. And, and even the Medicare plans are actually a little bit more affordable than what we offer now. So that's a good thing. One of the biggest benefits is the relief on staff. Myself and Karen and Emma and Stacy and some of the school folks, we spend an inordinate amount of time every month on healthcare. I've been the lead negotiator for a long time, and I can tell you, we spend an unbelievable amount of time. It's nothing to sneeze at. We're talking about dozens of hours a month easily throughout the year that will free up our time, that we won't have to, Karen and I especially, will not have to do as much work. I can use that time towards plenty of other things that are on my plate. In all seriousness, and many of the projects Karen has not been able to get to in HR is because we just spend so much staff time on this. In this system, by moving to the GIC, Ellen Collins, our benefits coordinator, will be the one person who'll be able to coordinate on behalf of the town and schools, all healthcare. It's very efficient. It's one contact at the GIC. There's a manual every year. There's one open enrollment. It actually will bring a lot more efficiencies to the system. And the last couple of things I'd say, by law, by moving this to the GIC, we have to actually return some of the savings from the premiums to the employees, and we've already got an agreement with the employees to have one month premium holiday if those savings materialize. So that's a really good advantageous thing for them. I know there are many appoint, I can't see everybody because it's so crowded in here, but I know there are a lot of employee units in the room. We did have an insurance advisory committee meeting. We have had several over the last month. Our teachers, fire, police, custodians, DPW, librarians, our retiree representative, and I think I might be forgetting, public works, sergeants, all of our unions voted in favor, and the active. And the active non-union employees, as well as the retiree representative, who is a former teacher, by the way, all voted unanimously to recommend to you to move to the GIC. This actually could help us with our budget deficit. So one of the big risks with this, to be transparent, is we don't know if the subscriber rate's going to go up. Right now, we have about a 54% subscriber rate for eligible employees. That may go up to 60, 65, which would drive some of the budget costs maybe up. However, particularly for the folks that are on the more affordable plans, a lot of our younger employees who took advantage of the qualified high deductible option, which was a huge savings in their paycheck and getting a health savings account set up. You know, we're hopeful that through great education, if we can get the vote tonight and get into the GIC on December 1st, that'll give us, excuse me, I should give Emma. And Karen, about five months to work throughout all of our schools and all of our employee units to try to educate them properly on their choices so that they're purchasing the plan that is best for them. Because it's not just about getting a Cadillac plan. Oh, well, the town's going to pick up the bill. That's actually oftentimes not the best plan for you in terms of where you live or what is coming out of your paycheck. So we have about four or five months to do that. One of the other benefits, as I close out, will be oftentimes in the past, I think the schools may speak to this. You know, because the budget season goes later, our open enrollment was later, and we would never actually have actual healthcare numbers for our employees based on subscriber rates earlier in the budget process. Open enrollment for the GIC is in April. So by the time we get to Memorial Day, we will actually have the actual number of subscribers. And if we get into more of a budget pinch in May and June or in the early part of the fiscal year, we can actually use actual numbers in the budget, which is something that will help us out a lot down the line. So we're here to answer any questions that folks have. We unanimously support this. There's no question that as we look out the next three to five, 10 years with healthcare, it is going to be a very challenging environment. I don't expect healthcare reform to be on Beacon Hill's agenda this calendar year, but after the election next year and after another year of likely federal cuts, I would anticipate in 2027 or '28, the state of Massachusetts, because of Medicaid alone, is going to have to do something on a massive overhaul of our healthcare system. There's no question that getting into the GIC and having these options and choice for our employees will also be a strong recruitment tool, I think particularly for the schools. And it's the right time to get in because we don't know down the line if the GIC or the state's going to change their rules. Now is absolutely the time to get into the Group Insurance Commission. So obviously happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Questions from the council?
Ted.
Go ahead.
No, just in the.
I have questions. First question is, can you, Jamie, can you tell us what percentage of Massachusetts communities are on the GIC?
It's 55. Is that school districts?
55 groups altogether.
55 groups, so that would be municipalities and school districts.
Okay. And can you just explain to me why we haven't done this in the past? What was our reasons for not going there earlier?
I think loss of control is a big issue, right? I think a lot, for a long time, I think the employees in the IAC wanted to make sure that we had better control over plan design. It is a three-year commitment. Once you get in, you're stuck for three years. But I think given the three years we're looking at, this is the right three years. But in the past, the employees have maybe made some tweaks to plan design, qualified high deductible. We've been able to have our own local control over it. And also, our loss runs were at a point where we could kind of control our own destiny. But because our healthcare metrics are not in great shape, we've had to really dig in over the last couple of years with the changes in the market. And that's where you see that the deductibles have gone really high. And so, you know, I think, I speak for the IAC. I think the big reason was in the past, nobody wanted to make that three-year commitment. Because looking out, we could have maybe gotten a better deal. But that was maybe a few years ago when deductibles were 2,000 or 1,000 and some of the rates were a little bit more affordable. But at this point, the system's really not really in great shape. So Karen?
My name's Karen Brad. I'm the HR Director. Just to add to that, I think this year was really the year where it made sense for our retirees. So we have about 600 retirees on Medicare that are on a Medicare Advantage Plan with us. We had some major reforms a couple of years ago where we got that rate down, where it was a lot cheaper to stay on that plan instead of switching to the GIC. We had a 67% increase for plans as of January 1st. And every single GIC plan has a lower rate. So that was really an opportunity to get our retirees on the same plan. When you go, you have to go active and retirees. You can't separate your pool. So that's really what, I think, changed our minds to really, you know, fight for our retirees on limited income and our employees. But it benefited both this time.
I have a couple more questions. Can I just tell someone else? Okay. Have you modeled this through as far as what you think the impact is going to be to the employees?
Yes. It depends on what plan employees choose. But compared to our high deductible plan, which about, I think it's like 70% of our employees on that are on that currently, their deductible is going to drop. For an individual, we have a $2,500 deductible. The GIC is down to 400 or 500, depending on the plan. Our family deductible is up to 5,000, and that would be going down to 800 or 1,000. There's three plans that you can choose from that are 500 to $700 cheaper for the employees. Even if they pick some of the more expensive plans, they could pay $575 more a year to be on a different plan. But generally, it'll be advantageous for the employees.
And how is this coverage provided? So like, who's the, like, are we going to, are you going to commercial providers? Like, who cross Blue Shield?
Right.
And just before I, let me finish the question. Is that going to be a change of providers for employees? Like, in other words, they were on Harvard, now they're going to go to Cross Blue Shield?
So there's a number of different providers. I think Ken and Rusty could probably expand on them a little bit more. We're currently on a Harvard Pilgrim plan. We're self-insured, but we have Harvard Pilgrim. And there are three Harvard Pilgrim plans. And one of them would be almost identical for providers. There's a couple of plans available through a company called WellPoint, which is actually owned by Anthem, which is the same company that owns Blue Cross Blue Shield. There's a Mass General Brigham Plan, which would cover, you know, any of the downtown hospitals or anything like that. And there's a Health New England Plan. It's one of the only plans that's really geared to people in the western part of the state. So that's probably a plan that our employees would not take advantage of. But they are reputable plans. The GIC has like 460,000 subscribers. So every employee that works for the state of Massachusetts is on this plan. So it's pretty well-known in Massachusetts, plus the 50 or 60 municipalities.
No further questions from you?
Oh, excuse me, did you?
If I'm here just to help Karen answer the questions.
Okay.
I want to make a statement, but also, this is for school and town employees. It's not like just the municipal side. So this is the same plans that they would be choosing on the school level?
Yep, correct.
Okay. And GIC I'm familiar with because my husband's a retired correctional officer from Plymouth.
Right.
And we're on GIC. And we have WellPoint. So it basically, GIC is like in layman's terms, it's kind of like they're the broker and they have all these other ones underneath them. And then you can kind of choose. We don't normally get to choose. We just get a new card saying this is what we have now because he's retired. And we just kind of go with it. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not so good. Right now, I like WellPoint. WellPoint's good. So I'm familiar with the way GIC works. And I've not really had any issues with them. I think that the employees would probably be more grateful.
Thank you. And I believe Councilor Cormier Ledger has a question?
Just more of a statement, Mr. Chairman. I thank you. Running on a little bit of espresso here, so you'll have to forgive me. I heard the Town Administrator say quickly, and I think it's important for the minutes and for the audience, that currently employee health insurance that we are paying, that the town is paying for both the school side and the municipal side, is a 14% increase year over year. I don't think that can be understated at what a large whack that is to any operating budget. And I believe, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the municipal side of the budget carries 100% of that in the budget, that this does not impact the school budget, correct?
Well, that is, that's not correct. Right now, employee healthcare is split into, partially into Account 300 for school employees. And then it's in the municipal budget and I think Account 910 or 900 something in the, in the, in the town budget. However, to your point, Councilor Cormier Ledger, I think if there was a year, and I know it's been suggested in the past at our joint budget meetings, and I'm supportive of it, if there was a year to merge it into one place, this would be the year because as Councilor Callaway Tripp mentioned, it's all the same benefits going to all the same people. And I do think that there would be an efficiency there as well. So, but right now, the costs are split between town employees are out of the municipal budget and school employees are out of the school budget, Account 300.
And just to clarify, all the retirees, town and school, are in Account 910. We have different line items for school retirees, town retirees, and another group of grandfathered school employees.
And I think that might have been what Councilor Cormier Ledger was referencing, the fact that in the municipal budget is the retired, is the retired teachers' health insurance is in the municipal budget.
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that. But thank you for, just for sharing that information with the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ted. Mr. Chairman? Steve?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. Jamie, I don't know if you can answer it fully. I think you tried to address it in terms of overall cost for the, for the town. I guess that depends on how many people enroll and what kind of plans. So you won't know exactly what the exposure is for the town, depending on what they choose. But you mentioned also that the expected costs for health insurance are going to go up 14%. With this new plan, is that 14% still kind of baked into that? Or will we be at 7% or 8% compared to last year and the current plans that people are on?
Through Mr. Chairman, it's a really good question. It's hard to predict the answer to that. It could go in either direction. It could be 17% or it could go down to 10%. You're correct. I think I'm hopeful with the fact that our employee base largely is getting younger, that this is an opportunity to transition to the GIC, do good education, particularly through the school networks, to be honest. Because for every, you know, for employees, three of them are educators, right? I think this is a really good opportunity for the teachers' union and all of us on the staff to help educate everybody. Because I think Councilor Callaway Tripp actually made a really good point by saying, we just kind of get a new card, right? And it just kind of comes in. Because this is a change, I think this is an engagement level that we can do that will get more engagement from our employees than ever before. And I don't know what the GIC rates yet are going to look like in terms of the percent increase because they come out in February, I think, Ken. So we won't know what the GIC rates are until FY '27, until February. But that's still okay. That's still a little earlier than what we've been used to because we've had to pull rabbits out of a hat for several, for a few years, and it kind of gets delayed till April. So we're going to have, I think, better numbers, more accurate numbers, earlier in the fist, earlier in the budget process than we'll have in the past. Could be lower than 14%. Could be a little bit higher. There's still a lot of unknowns. The Secretary in A&amp;F spoke yesterday, the State Administration of Finance Budget Chief, about still, how there's still so many unknowns with what's coming from the federal level. So I think that's a big factor for next year, too.
I want to ask one more.
You still got the floor?
Just not in any level of detail, but I'm just sort of interested, having just signed up for Medicare. What, explain a little bit our exposure in terms of Medicare payments. Are we paying part of premiums?
Karen's our Medicare.
Yeah, so anybody that's over 65, by Massachusetts law, if you're still working at 65, you can stay on your, can stay on our regular plan as either an individual or a family.
Right.
Some people do choose to go on Medicare and drop our active coverage. Once you're retired, if you or your spouse, once they turn 65, you're required to go on Medicare.
Right.
So you go typically on Medicare Part A as soon as you turn 65. You go on Part B when you retire. That cost was like $186 a month. It just was announced this week, it went up to 202. And then you're eligible, once you're on Medicare, you let the town know and you would switch to what we have now as a Medicare Advantage Plan with Aetna. That, that's the plan that actually went up quite significantly.
Right.
67%. So the full cost of the plan was $336. Now it's 559. So the town is paying 70% of that cost every month. And the retirees' premium went from 107 a month to 167.
Thank you. That kind of gets to the gist of what I was trying to figure out, like what the town pays versus what the retiree pays.
Correct, yeah. So the Aetna plan is, it works in conjunction with Medicare, but the main advantage is it's your prescription drug coverage.
Got it. Thank you.
You all said?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
So I just wanted to summarize what I think I'm hearing. Let me know if there's something that I'm saying that's not accurate. You know, basically, if we, if we do this, then it essentially, you know, should lead to maybe not 100%, but largely lower costs for both employees and retirees of Franklin, a lesser burden for our staff in terms of work. It still provides a range of plans. It's not a fly-by-night type of operation. There's a potential positive impact on the town deficit, which is, which is not nothing. But there's a risk that too many sign up for the Cadillac plan as opposed to kind of the best plan for themselves. And the way we result, we deal with that risk is really about education.
Correct.
Making sure people know what they're doing.
Correct.
What am I missing? What risks?
We do actually have, what's pretty typical is the town right now, if an employee chooses to be on our PPO plan, the town only pays 50% of the premium. So if an employee chooses to go on the indemnity plans or the PPO plans offered by the state, which are the most expensive ones, we would only pay 50%. So that really drives up their annual costs. So we don't see a lot of people, we don't expect a lot of people to go to those top three. The, the other ones are not too much more expensive. A couple of them are a little bit more expensive. A couple of them are quite a bit less expensive. So we plan to do, we do a lot of engagement with the Insurance Advisory Committee. We go out to, to schools, to the fire station, to the police station. We have office hours where people can stop by and ask about plans. And we would be educating people that just because the plan's more expensive doesn't mean it's always better. And there, there's a plan that Ken has done a lot of work with other towns to encourage people that don't have a lot of costs and don't plan to go to the expensive Boston hospitals. They can engage in the WellPoint Community Choice Plan, which actually saves the town its $1,700 less a year per employee compared to what we currently have. So we certainly don't know what people are going to choose, but we'll be very active in going out and educating people and trying to make sure that they pick the right, you know, that the right plan. For some people, it might be very important to get that access to the Boston hospital or whatever their family needs. But we think a lot of people, we could sort of encourage to go to the WellPoint plan.
So the takeaway to me is that this is a good financial and healthcare decision, provided we are good about educating the people who are in the matrix.
Correct. And we have an Insurance Advisory Committee made up of a representative from every union. And they're really our eyes and ears and the people that go out and educate people. I think we need to do a little bit more with our retirees. In the past couple of years, we've done more education. We've seen a lot of them switch to the high deductible plan. So we'll continue to do that. So you don't know what people are going to enroll in. But if we looked at our data compared to the statewide data, but if we looked at our data compared to the statewide data, it could be a savings of like one point four million if we engaged in the same percentages as they do statewide. It's kinda the best guess that you can do.
It's a little bit impetus to make sure we're doing a good job of educating.
Right. And I think when you go back to that pool of retirees, we're absolutely gonna save there. So that will kinda balance out some of the people that pick higher-cost plans as active employees.
Thank you.
Um, I know we said that the deductibles would be significantly less on the GIC plan. Um, I did see that the out-of-pocket maximums are like five thousand dollars for an individual or ten thousand for, um, family, and so I'm just wondering how that compares to the plans that we have now. So the deductibles way less, um, what is the possible maximum?
I think they're actually very similar in out-of-pocket max.
Okay.
Yeah, I have that, um, somewhere. Do you remember what our, what they were?
I think they're exactly the same.
Yeah, I think they were five thousand or ten thousand as well.
We're not risking our employees paying an astronomically higher number, um, okay.
Right, yeah, the out-of-pocket is, once you hit that, you're not paying anything else for the year.
Okay.
Those would be the same numbers.
Thank you. Um, and then I have one comment to Jamie. You mentioned that, um, the schools pay for the insurance out of their own budget. Um, I noticed that they are the only department that does that. Every municipal department, um, that comes from like the, the central, um, account. And I, I'm not necessarily asking why I know that it's separated, but I found it interesting that in your budget presentation, you had a list of comparable towns. And, um, I looked at their budget books, and I think every single one that I could find, there were two that I couldn't, I couldn't find the, the information, their budget books, but every single one of those towns has like a shared services or shared expenses account that combines the school, um, and municipal insurance and benefits. And so I just thought it was very interesting that we don't do that, and I think that, to your point, we, this is a good year to do this, especially for changing health insurance already. I think we absolutely need to put all of the insurance and benefits into one account that's paid from, um, the central office instead of dividing it up and having the schools pay that out of their own budget.
Yeah, through Councilor, I, I, I appreciate that, um, very much because I think it will save, uh, on our staff time as well, and I mean this sincerely. I think it'll save, you know, some school employees as well from having to spend more time on these issues. I think it will obviously, as you know, it'll take a, probably a couple of years to transition fully. We'll do it now, but I appreciate the support on that. I think it's a good idea, I think it makes it much clearer for what the trends and costs are for healthcare. We have a lot of graphs and charts that are already in the budget. I think with Emma here, with the benefits coordinator, I think she can do still a lot more, and I think we gotta look at what our trends are health-wise. 'Cause even if the loss runs are high, you know, we've talked to the IAC about this, it's not easy. But we still have to address the issue of why do we consume such a high amount of healthcare, right? I mean, it's certainly high-cost claims, but I think digging into the numbers a lot deeper is something that's gonna be really important, and I think by having that all centralized, I think that will help a lot as well. So I, I appreciate that feedback very much.
And, sorry, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I actually just had a follow-up. We have sixty-seven percent of our employees are on the high deductible, and that, um, out-of-pocket max is the exact same. The EPO, our current EPO and PPO are at four thousand individual and eight thousand family.
Okay.
So those would go up slightly.
A little bit, alright.
We only have three people on the PPO, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for that additional information, I appreciate it. Um, one more thing, just to respond to Jamie. Um, the, I, I think if, I mean, I've already, we've already kind of established that this is, I think, a good idea to combine them, but what's interesting is that once that happens, um, your list of comparable towns and like the education budget, it comes down to, um, right within the range of those other, the other comparable towns. And so instead of, you know, the schools having fifty-four percent of the budget, it would go down to, I think it's like about forty-seven percent.
Right.
Um, which is right in line with that. So I think it's actually a really good, um, move all around, so I encourage if we're changing health insurance to do that as well.
Sure. And I did clause, I know there was a clause on that slide that I did mention that I think apples and oranges throughout, but again, I just wanna make sure we're clear about this. I know you know this, but just for everybody in the audience, that doesn't mean the school budget can stay at the number it is. And I say that, like, thank you for laughing. I think some think that it can stay up, right? If we just switch it, that can't happen. The body of amount of money that'll come from the school department on this is pretty substantial, so. Um, and also, just for other clarity, you'll hear from me many more times, but I think, 'cause we're talking about the budget next as well, if you look on the budget control sheet, we actually take out of the enterprise funds a percentage of the employees that are water, sewer, stormwater employees, right? So those are called indirects. And it's a line item on the revenue sheet that a lot of people gloss over 'cause it's in between state aid and local aid and stuff. But in there is indirects. We transfer money from those enterprise accounts for the proportion of that employee, for their healthcare, OPEB, and other benefits, from the cost from ratepayers into the budget, so it's an offset in the overall budget. We would expect the same thing to happen from the school revolving funds, right? Because some of their healthcare is certainly paid for out of, uh, employees are paid for out of those accounts. And so it'll actually help the budget with another offset from the revolving funds to come over to help compensate from that healthcare cost as well. So it's not like the entire cost is from account three hundred. It also comes from some of their revolving funds, and we'll work with the schools for the next few months to try to put those numbers together.
Are you all set? Thank you, Amy. Councilor Blaine?
Yes, um, due, through you to Jamie and/or Karen. Um, what is the current fiscal year twenty-six school and town total healthcare insurance budget amount?
Um, I believe Jana could probably speak to. Six point eight for the schools, okay. And it's, um, about six point six, and that would be actives, um, and all our retirees. So six point six plus six point eight.
Thirteen point four million dollars.
There you go.
So if we, if we were able to save ten percent of that, that's about one point three million dollars that we get.
Correct, yep.
Just wanted to, to talk about that. I mean, one of the things I, I did, um, and, and it goes to Councilor Malloy's question. I mean, in some ways, you can model this out right now. And I'm surprised we haven't even tried to attempt to model this out as to what the impact would be using the current GIC rates that employees would have had to pay this year, and run a model to see what it would've looked like for just the exact patient, just the exact amount of employees that we have today.
Uh, we did, we did do that, yeah.
Okay, so you do have a model. So if you ran that, the same amount of employees today, what would we have spent with the GIC this year? Instead of thirteen point four, would it have been, what would have been the number?
Well, it's a saving of one point four.
Were we talking actives and retirees? Yeah, we saved about one point four million dollars.
So it would've been a one point four million dollar savings, so a little bit more than the ten percent. Okay.
Correct.
So that, that's good. Now, I understand Jamie's comment that we don't know, when we go into it, it may become more attractive. My wife's plan is less attractive because now I can come into here and it's four hundred dollars versus two thousand dollars. So, and I think I heard you, you say that we do this today. We do offer, we do contribute more or less depending upon the plan.
Correct.
I'm assuming that we would have the same flexibility with the GIC. It's not seventy percent across the board for all the plans. We'd be able to cater it.
Yes.
It would be interesting to kind of, before we actually got to the signup period, to try and project what that number is gonna be, so we can actually model out that that Cadillac Plan, instead of being fifty percent, may need to be fifty, forty percent because we need to, again, as a, as a private business, that's what I do.
I believe fifty percent.
I tweak the model as to what I'm gonna pay to drive people to a different plan.
Fifty percent is the, um, minimum that we can contribute by state law.
Okay.
So, yeah, we wouldn't be able to go under fifty as the employer.
For those that are in other areas, we tweak it, we drive it higher for those. So instead of seventy to seventy-five, because we wanted to go to that one, it's, that's, I want, I would be interested in, as long as we can play with the number, that will certainly help mitigate how many more members kinda come into the plan.
Correct, yeah, so three.
It does sound like a much more attractive plan.
Three of the eight plans will be at fifty-fifty, but we could certainly look into modeling, you know, a couple more, a little bit higher.
Yeah, that's all. That's all the questions, that's all the questions I have right now, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question. Uh, does the town, either through insurance or through other, uh, contracts or whatever, offer fitness reimbursement or any other kinds of things to keep people healthy?
Yes.
For preventative things?
Yep. Um, all our, our plan currently offers a hundred and fifty dollars per subscriber, so it would be limited to three hundred dollars per family, and the GIC offers that same benefit. So you just submit your, you know, gym membership, um, like a beach body workout, you submit what you spent in the, um, year, and they'll reimburse you directly.
Thank you.
Jamie, did you say you had one more question?
Yeah, just mainly for clarification. You mentioned the enterprise funds, and it just made my brain go bing. So, are you, you saying that for employees that work within those areas, the money comes from those sections to cover their health insurance?
Correct.
Okay, because I know we're not supposed to use that other than for those specific areas, so I was just clarifying that.
Yeah, that's a statutory issue, so I think what you're getting at, I hope, is that when you're, um, the enterprise funds are paid by ratepayers, right?
Right.
I, I'm not, I'm just doing this for other people who may not have been following along for a long time. So if you pay into the water, if you're on, if you're on, if you're on your private septic or you're on, you know, your own private well, you're not a ratepayer, right? You get your water from the ground. So if you pay into the water system by statute, you can only use costs associated with that for that purpose. So those employees are in our town budget overall, but we inject indirect money in to pay for the healthcare or other benefits from those accounts into the budget, so it's basically an offset in the total, in the total budget.
Okay.
So you're correct.
Thank you.
So everybody all set? I just have a, a couple of comments. Do, do we at any time, like, I, I'm on my wife's, I could be on the T's, but the T is on GIC too now, but, I get three thousand dollars back a year for going on, uh, for being on my wife's plan. So do we offer anything like that?
We don't. We have considered it, um, I would say part of it is the workload. It really has to be a very strong policy so that if a person's already been on their spouse's health insurance for twenty years, we would all of a sudden be paying them to keep doing what they were already doing. So some of it is a concern of actually adding costs to the budget. Um, I think you have to do a very clear policy that said, if you were on Franklin's plan for, you know, three years and you choose to, to go, then we'll pay it. But we are concerned that that could actually drive up our costs. Because there are, um, it's about forty percent of our employees are not on our coverage currently.
Okay.
And we're okay with that. So we don't, might not wanna pay those.
I was just kinda curious if we did, because I know Masport does it for me.
We bounce the idea around quite a bit.
But, um, the GIC is, it's, it's good, I'm gonna have to go on GIC. Like Councilor Malloy, I'm signing up for Medicare too. And it is actually gonna be cheaper for, for, uh, my wife to get a single plan and for me to get a single plan, you know, secondary plan.
Correct, yep.
Than for us to go on a family plan. So I know, what I'm hoping is, what I'm hearing is, like, I hope that the younger kids go on the cheaper plan, and that's what I did, you know, somebody that's been on in the public sector for forty years, that's what I did when I was younger, but then, you know, as time goes on, you gotta go on a better plan because age can't happen.
So Ken does that, has done this presentation for several other towns, that Well Point has three different price plans. And the idea is, when you're young and invincible, you can really go on that cheap option. Maybe once you have your kids, you go to that next one, and then, you know, if you have other health issues, you might want that top plan. Um, but the idea will do education to say, just because it costs more doesn't mean it's better coverage. You can go to a lot of the same doctors, like, just this is the difference between the plans and
Right.
Try to have, make, have people make smart decisions and not just, you know, pick the most popular one.
And we encourage that with, with my union is, when we negotiate contracts, we, we try to educate. To Ken's point is, try to educate these kids, they want free healthcare, but that is gone, and that, that's not coming back. And, uh, so you gotta try to educate them to get the best bang for their buck.
We, I mean, we try, it, it's gotten better, I think we've just inserted ourselves into pre-existing meetings where they have to listen to us, that's what we usually do at, um, the Fire Department and DPW. Um, it gets a little trickier, we work closely with the teachers' union, but, you know, they're in, they're in class so much, so it is difficult. Um, we do a lot of sessions, but people don't always show up, so we'll count on the IAC to really encourage people to attend.
And, and will they, will the GIC, will the, the companies come out in, in April, will they, or will you guys?
The companies don't, um, we would probably work closely with Ken and his, um.
Yeah, one, one of the things we'll do is we'll probably conduct, you know, classrooms, instructions for employees to make sure they understand the differences. The carriers don't come out directly to each of the communities, and it's kinda relies on the HR department. But one of the things we've done lately is the Well Point program, the three programs that, that Karen has mentioned, they've done a better job of explaining sort of the differences. And quite honestly, we, we can't here in town, uh, compete with that menu of options, right? So when Karen hires a younger employee, we will express to them that the, the Well Point Community Choice, very inexpensive, is very robust for that cost, and as they get older and they need more coverage, they can migrate into the Well Point Plus Plan, covers every provider in, in the state, for instance. Um, it's rare that some of the employees are gonna need the more expensive plans. It's unnecessary here in Massachusetts. But we've been able to do this enough times with enough communities where we've been able to rotate the membership into the more cost-affordable plans. So I quite honestly would expect that even with the models we, we've developed that will meet those targets and hopefully exceed them.
All right, um, thank you. I'm all set. Everybody all set? Is everybody ready to vote, or so I'll take a motion to, we'll vote on this. I thought we already did.
We did.
We just gotta vote.
Mr. Chairman, Councilor Cormier-Ledger did get booted off, he's trying to rejoin, so he's gonna miss this vote, I think. Just I wanted you to know, Councilor Griffiths.
Do we have to go vote, call vote?
We might as well. You might as well.
Alright, Malloy?
Yes.
Would you?
Yes.
Griffiths, yes? LeBlanc?
Yes.
Morinjello?
Yes.
Callaway-Trip?
Yes.
Grelle?
Yes.
Yes.
And then did we get Ted back?
Nope.
Okay, well then, he's up.
Motion, Carrie.
We just note him as absent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. Alright, moving on. Resolution twenty-five dash seventy-two, general fund appropriations reduction, FY twenty-six. We'll, we'll read the motion, resolution.
Motion, be it moved and voted by the Town Council to reduce the FY twenty-six general fund budget appropriations as indicated above in the total amount of two hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
I have a motion, do I have a?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-five seventy-two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion. Max?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I had a question for Attorney Sorrell, um, through the chair. I just want to know if we don't have, under this, uh, resolution, we will no longer have a deputy town administrator in the budget. What kind of liability will we face as a part of the town administrator contract?
This is strictly a financial, uh, matter. I can't, anything beyond that, I'm not prepared to address.
Um, yes, I'm just concerned, you know, we have an agreement with the town administrator that, uh, we have to have a deputy town administrator. I'm not sure how this resolution's gonna affect that going forward. And so I just, um, I'm just cautious about doing something that might make us, uh, at risk of, of, um, uh, liability if we continue down that road. And I, I guess Jamie can talk to it if he wants.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, unfortunately, there is an outstanding deliberation that's gonna require an executive session at one point. I think to be transparent, uh, but cautious, number one, I mean, let's be real, like, you know, the deputy town administrator was, you know, a bit of a piñata in this community for a while. Very disappointing, hard. You know, and I felt, um, that in talking and working with Julie, where, you know, we're managing a community of thirty-four thousand people with extraordinary amounts of responsibility, and it's just two people. You could go to a town next door, um, the town of Stowe, for example, just 'cause I saw the town manager the other day, they have four people in their town manager's office in a town of ten thousand. I agree with Councilor Morinjello, at some point, you have to deal with my office. I've tried to do everything I can to try to withstand more cuts to other places. The town budget does not have another dollar that can be cut. I think right now, the biggest need for Julie and I is work-life balance. Elbow grease, people in the office, we just laid off the administrative assistant because of the failed override, so I have nobody answering phones, we've gone to a phone tree. We don't have anybody dedicated in the office all the time, 'cause Julie's responsibilities take her a lot of places, obviously mine do as well. I really do thank Councilor Morinjello for his comments. Um, I just don't know what else to do, because we're kinda stuck in a rock and a hard place for a little while. But right now, Julie and I need help. So the proposal is to try to have a part-time admin that mainly reduces a lot of the responsibility on her plate, which is public records requests, a lot of the property and casualty insurance, my, uh, you know, potholes, and just, just dealing with all the insurance claims of workers' comp, dealing with the safety committee and being an assistant there, as well as getting ready for meetings like tonight with copies that were needed for up there. So I'm looking at probably an eight to twelve every day, roughly. You know, every morning, kinda consistency, um, so that her and I have some hours in the day where we're flexible and can move around and not have to be in the office or get, um, people to call us to tell us we're not there. Um, and then on the communications thing, uh, for Councilor DeLoreco and Councilor Cormier-Ledger, they know the history with this, we've had two. We've had two different people, they've all gotten laid off at different points in the budget crisis. The schools and I came up with an innovative idea about five or six years ago where we had one position for both the schools and the town. That position unfortunately at one point got laid off, then we were able to get some money back on the town side. We hired somebody in good faith to work with the schools as well. That person ended up getting laid off due to budget cuts. But I think we heard it from the citizen satisfaction survey that, you know, getting the information out to the public, engaging people more, getting out the good news, I think hopefully all of you are on our newsletter. We send it every couple of weeks. And just working with HR and with Julie and the staff, and I think the department heads, I think we felt like these were the two positions that we needed now to be in the office, to actually do physical work and production and do things that are gonna take work off our plates. In an absence of that, I think at some point, the council is gonna have to address this issue with a deputy town administrator. I'll say it's incredibly embarrassing for this community of this size, of this budget, to not have one, when, you know, four fifths of 80% of the state of Massachusetts has them. I mean, Medway, Milis, I mean, towns, eighth of our size have an assistant town manager. I think it got political, and that's unfortunate, but I think what I wanted to do was get some elbow grease in the office, wait for the new council to come on board, and then work with all of you, however the election was gonna go, with either the folks that were running before on the council or the folks here, to say, okay, when we get to budget season in the spring, we gotta have a much more active conversation about this. Because we're already in a deficit. And so I don't know how we're gonna ever afford that at some point. So I guess I would just leave it there, because really not much more I can say outside of executive session and the contractual obligation.
Max, you take it?
I yield the floor.
Okay. I just wanna make one comment. There's no time limit, though, right? So I think within the law, we're fine, right? There's no time limit for us to get you an assistant town manager.
No, there's no requirement. Well, there's a contractual obligation to Max's point, but I think there is no other timeline on anything else. You don't have to do anything tonight. You don't have to do anything on that issue tonight, for sure.
Right.
So my question is, does this have to be 1.5 FTEs? Can you use like a temporary position? So that way, if we need to take this money back in order to hire a deputy town administrator, that we wouldn't have to be laying off people to get that money back?
It's a really great question, Councilor Grelle. I don't know. I mean, I just, at some point, the budget problems in this community are disappointing. I think there's been a lot of rhetoric that's inaccurate. But I really, I don't actually authentically know how to answer that question, because I just think there's also a lot of, and I understand I'm part of this too, this is my responsibility. If you look at the website, we've tried to, I've tried to update the website to depict what I do. I think Councilor Cormier-Ledger has said this a few times too, and he's right. There is a holistic misunderstanding in this community of what my job is. Like, it's just a problem, I think, that I hope to work with all of you to try to get out more information of what exactly my days are like and what the work is that I'm doing. But I think even in absence, I think with the one and a half people, my predecessor had more people in his office than I do by far. Even if you added an assistant town manager, he had more staff 30 years ago than I have today. And I think anybody in this room would agree, there's a lot more to do today than there was 30 years ago. But, you know, I think we've got a great staff that are very, do a great job, we're a great team. We back each other up, and so we've been able to get through it. I would suggest that the one point, one and a half employees that's here, I would hope would be permanent. I think the question would be is, what's that deputy position in addition to all of this? I think if the deputy town administrator were there, I think the way that myself, Julie, and this one and a half, I think that would be the ideal office. So I would not want to lay these people off. I would want to add the deputy position in addition to the stuff that's here right now. Because I think communications too and engagement is, and we've all talked about this too. You guys have all had great ideas when we've met personally. It's a big issue. And I think having more bandwidth with all of you on the council, but also bandwidth in the office, is key as well. I think Councilor Grelle has the floor.
I'm all set. Thank you. We can mute him.
Councilor Cormier-Ledger, do you have a question here?
Just more of a state... Thank you. Sorry, I was having some technical difficulties before. I guess it actually is a question to Jamie. Given the financial challenges that the town faces, and, you know, we really are trying to bridge the gap between the us versus them rhetoric with the school department, because I do truly believe we are just one Franklin, and I think that many in the community would like to see us act that way. Is there any opportunity to, Councilor Griffiths' point a few minutes back, is there any point to, or possibility to explore a shared service agreement for some administrators?
I think the superintendent, it's a question for the superintendent. We, I have offered that before, and it hasn't worked out. You know, we're on the same floor. You know, we're right next to each other, but I think, I think that's a question, Councilor Cormier-Ledger, you're gonna have to ask the school committee and superintendent here.
You also...
Okay, well, perhaps when we resume the joint budget subcommittee meetings, it can be something that we talk about more in depth, because I'd like to see more of an effort for the two to work together. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier-Ledger. I agree with, with Councilor Cormier-Ledger that when we get the joint subcommission, that might be an idea that we would bring out.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Jamie, one, I mean, obviously, part of this balancing is the $55,000 coming out of your department. I'll say thank you for that. Two, obviously, local receipts are tracking better. That's actually another way that you've helped fund this gap. And I think the other, the other positive in here, and we don't see it tonight, we'll see it in December when we set the tax rate hearing, is that the tri-county debt exclusion is $200,000, $220,000 less. I was trying to figure out today what that's gonna mean for everyone's tax rate. It's probably like three cents or something like that.
Yeah, that's right.
But your taxes will be lower because of the $228,000 less in tri-county debt. So I did want to point that out tonight. So other than that, I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, that was a good point. Councilor Malloy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. I mean, as this is written now, great on the debt exclusion reduction, that's terrific, local receipts being up so much, almost a million bucks over the course of the year.
Yes.
We must be serving some really good food here or something.
We are. We are. Right across the street, over here. No, I, I think I've said this like a broken record, but I appreciate your acknowledging that, and Councilor Blake as well, but all of those local receipts are at all-time highs.
Yeah.
I think that showcases, you know, people are coming to Franklin to shop, to eat out. That's good for jobs, it's good for our economy, like, these are good things. I mean, it does bring a little traffic.
It's good stuff.
But it, but it, but it is good, and I think it shows also the commitment of the planning staff and economic development we've done over the years. Like, we really have done an amazing job doing a lot of economic development projects that have brought in jobs and revenues, and I think you see that in our local receipts. We traditionally have been moderate to conservative with our projections, but obviously with the budget issues over the last couple of years, we've gotten more moderate. I don't think, I want to get to a place where we're moderate to liberal or liberal, because that means if those numbers don't come in, then at the end of the year, we gotta cut. So we're at a good sweet spot on a moderate number, and I think, I appreciate your acknowledging those revenues.
Just further to the $55,000 saving from your office, if we did not, and I'm starting to really appreciate and like the idea of some kind of communications position. I think that's really important for schools, for us, whatever. I really would like to kind of explore that in some detail. The part-time admin, I kind of understand, and that leaves a savings of about $55,000. And I know there's no, for your office, you're busy and you need help, I get that. I guess I'm just a little uncomfortable committing to two positions now. The communications person and even a part-time person. Frankly, if we're gonna bring back positions, I'd like to look at the senior center nurse, that's somehow in the mix, maybe not related to this. But I'd like to see if we can kind of either rewrite this or defer it or whatever. I'm just rarely reluctant to make a commitment for those two new hires, considering where we are with budget, considering what the uncertainty we're gonna face going forward. I know it's not easy, but I think for the sake of a couple of months and some more budget discussions and so forth, I'd be much more comfortable if we were to defer some of those decisions.
So I'm open to any feedback from the council, through you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, you know, we have to have a final budget reconciliation tonight to move forward. If you want to leave the $55,000, not cut that, maybe you have to make an amendment and cut it from somewhere else to make the numbers work. You could just move all of it to local receipts, to your point about the numbers, and we can leave it open-ended. The difficulty is, is that, the only challenge I have with that, Councilor Malloy, is that I need, like, somebody, like, soon, so, like, now. So, you know, I think deferring it is fine, I'm open to having conversations, I just don't know how long that's gonna take and how we do it. And there's a, there's a deep dive that I think this community avoided on the market for deputy town administrators. I just had one a couple of weeks ago in Norfolk County. Again, Natick, Needham, Canton, there's dozens of towns that pay $175, $185, $200, Canton pays $220 for their assistant town manager there. You know, I understand that my salary and the deputies are always gonna be community pinatas. I understand that. But I can assure you, if even I wasn't here today, somebody would be coming in asking for a lot more money for my job tomorrow if you were hiring somebody to do. The market is dwindling, the candidate pool is dwindling, it's very small, very few people are taking these jobs. You know, it's a buyer's market. And the skill needed at this position, as well as the deputy, is a lot more than I think people firmly understand, and that's a conversation I think I hope we can have during the budget of what the totality of, not just responsibility and hours, but the knowledge that's needed across a lot, like healthcare. You know, I mean, it's not easy to know, you gotta kind of know your stuff. So, you know, I'm at it in pass a little bit, because, you know, we're, you know, we're doing a great job, Julie and I, but, you know, we need help. We're working all weekend, so I don't know how to...
I get that.
I don't know how to address the doldrum period of like now, what we need, but also two, three, four, five months.
Well, with the, with the admin position, the four hours a day, the admin position go a long way towards solving that?
That would go a huge way. Particularly on the day-to-day with the big albatross right now, the public records requests, you know, all of the basic admin.
Now, is there a way to approve that? Maybe it's an agreement to, we know we have to reconcile the books, so if we pass this with the understanding that maybe we don't act immediately on the communications person in lieu of budget discussions, town, you know, deputy town administrator, those sorts of things, proceed with the part-time person and work together going forward for the other more permanent position, positions?
It's a council decision. I'm open to all of it, but I gotta, we gotta have this conversation again, like, two weeks from now. We gotta really start understanding what my office is gonna look like. We need to, 'cause, you know, another, and I'm not even, if I wait another two months, then that's another month posting, interview, you know, interviews. I mean, if I posted the job on January 1st to the communications person, I probably don't have somebody on until March. So now we're talking five months gap. And yet, you know, I think the deputy town administrator is gonna be another, I hope there's support for it, but, I mean, that's another $200,000 probably in the budget that's gonna add to the deficit or have to cut from other places. So I think if we can have those discussions sooner rather than later, it'd be helpful. I think the admin right now is certainly the priority. I do agree with that.
And I'm happy to support that. I just don't know what wording and the nomenclature and the logistics around the legislation has to be. But I really would like to kind of hold off on those other positions, the communication position, until we have a chance for more detail quickly, next meeting, you know. I think that's fair.
Hi, Kerry Bertoni, you're CFO through the chair. I really appreciate this budget discussion and look forward to many more with all of you, but it is imperative that we vote on this tonight because of the budget deficit, because I have to report to the Department of Revenue tomorrow in order to set the tax rate on December 3rd. So while I appreciate the town administrator's discussion, and I have been helping the town administrator's office as well.
Sure.
Because it is, it is not a two-person show, but I just want to make sure that we are understanding that this is for a budget deficit. And Jamie's department happens to be the one.
I get it.
Okay.
That's why I understand, like, the conflict and how to word it and what to do, and I understand the need to vote tonight to do this, to move everything else forward. I get that.
Okay.
I just want, want it to be recognized that, you know...
I appreciate that.
Maybe we don't pull the trigger on all of it until we're, we're more comfortable.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, too. The other thing I could do, thank you very much, Kerry. You could approve it as is, pause on the posting, you know, I could pause on the posting and come back and talk about it, and then even if it's another funding source that I can get creative, if you guys are supportive of the deputy, or if that conversation comes up in the next couple of months, even before FY27, could use the communications money to try to figure out a way to make that happen after, you know, if you want metrics or market baskets and things of that sort for the deputy, I can provide all of that at a future meeting, for sure. So we can certainly take a timeout, which wouldn't require any amendments as well.
I kind of think that's what Councilor Malloy was trying to say, I think.
Okay.
In a roundabout way.
No, no, that's, that's exactly right. Exactly right.
Just to that point, and I, and I think, Jamie, your suggestion does make sense. But I want us to think a little bit more about the fact that, you know, yes, it's clear that you need an admin in the office. It's also clear to me, based on the fact that we're all here, that community engagement and communications with the town are critical. They come from, for, you know, for better or worse, for whatever reason, the administrator's office, and he and she don't have the time or the bandwidth, really, to do it, the service, you know, at a level that it needs to be done. And I think that's been clear for some time. I, I get that we, you know, we don't have a deputy town administrator position. I understand Max's concern around that, and I, and I understand that's something we're gonna have to figure out down the road. But I think if we don't have someone who's communicating with the town so that they know what, so that people know what's going on, we're going to be subject to even more requests from their office and even more concerns and complaints to us about things that people are just, you know, misinformed or misunderstanding. And I think that's a major risk that, that we have if we don't approve the communications role today. Now, I'm with you, and I completely respect the, you know, your comment about, let's really be thoughtful about finances. I certainly want the senior center, you know, health position, health role back too. I think that's important. But I also think if we're not communicating with the town effectively and, you know, and often frankly, that we are not servicing our community the way we should. So that's the risk, I think, we have if we don't move forward with this. Now, ultimately, to Jamie's point, maybe there's a way to find another way, maybe we can approve this, and there might be a way to, to fund it differently. I'm fine, I'm completely, completely fine with that. But I do think that admin in the office and someone to help with communications are both critical needs. I just wanted to voice that.
You all set?
I am set. I have a comment. I was gonna just second with, I mean, what Steve said, also what Max, is that if we're gonna need a WTA, my concern would be that hiring these positions and then needing the obligation to get into that. So I need to have that kind of figured out before I think we go. And so if you, your recommendation to hold off on hiring these until we have a chance to kind of work this out, figure it out, I'm willing for that. I know we have to prove this to them, but that's what I'm...
Anyone else? Max, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna say, I do think that it is actually important that we do this right away. I think any constraints we have in the town administrator's office is gonna affect us as a council, to Ken's point, or to Councilor Juju's point. So, you know, the more, the less support we have from the town administrator's office, we're gonna be hamstrung as a council to make any decisions. I mean, right now, we're seeing that we might have our subcommittees axed, because there's no one to run them. So, you know, how are we supposed to do our jobs if we don't have anyone to help us? So I just want to make that clear. I do think we, I disagree that we should wait, I think we should hire them right away.
Thanks.
I'm good, I'm not gonna feel upset.
Yeah, I, yeah, that, it's a tough call. I kind of agree with, with both people. I really do, I mean, I understand, I mean, I know that the admin, we're not going to be getting any benefits for, so that, that should be, you know, that, you know, and it's, you know, that's a saving in itself, and, you know, eight to 12 is, you know, probably good for mother's hours and somebody, you know, somebody who can make a few bucks there. Carolyn has actually stepped up and said she would like to be the communication liaison between the council and this other person. So, yeah, it's, it's a hard decision, so if, but I think we approve it, and then Jamie does his thing, and, you know, we work around it, see what happens down the, down the road a little bit. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'd say approve the budget, you know, for tonight, for Carrie.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't need to do that. And then I will, you know, the tax rate hearing is on December 3rd, depending on how long that is, I can add a discussion, and we can show comparables and have at least some direction where I think-
Which way to go.
You'd be looking at December 3rd, you've at least got to give me some vote of direction of what y'all want me to do, right? And then, and then that, that's the right time to do it, because then, you know, we're going to bake all this into the budget model anyway. So, it kind of starts, I think, to Councilor Malloy's point, maybe the last meeting, we're trying to start this earlier. I just want to note, you know, that would restrict probably a little time on the tax rate hearing or some of the other stuff that week, so, you know, because that's, this is an in-depth conversation, this is not quick.
Right.
So, but we can put some materials together, and I'll commit to pausing on the thing for a couple of weeks, and we'll have a discussion on December 3rd, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
I think that's, I think that's perfect.
Yeah, I'm okay with approving this tonight. I will agree, two people in your office is not pretty. As someone who has made thousands of public records requests, I know what I've done to you, and I'm sorry. And I'm okay with the-
You can rest assured, you're easy. You should see some of the other stuff we get. The corporate, the corporations are rough.
Well, I had to stop, I was running for council, you know, so.
Right, right.
I'm okay with approving this to get the part-time person in there 100%, because I do think that you need at least that third body, because I've been in your office, and there's, like, nothing there. And if you are a resident coming up, and there's literally nobody sitting there, it's also very concerning. I do think, though, that if we can hold off on the communication, approve it, but don't do anything yet, because I think, to put it, I can't remember which one mentioned teaming the schools up, but here's another way of teaming up the schools in the town and sharing an expense, maybe, that can benefit both entities. It's another way of bringing the town together. I don't know if it's possible, but it's a thought.
Councilor Callaway-Trippe, you were spot-on. Problem is, hasn't worked before. We've done it twice, it was my idea, I went to Superintendent Hearn, maybe six years ago, Councilor Malloy, seven years ago.
About six years, yeah.
And both people we had, one was local, she was unbelievable.
She was great.
Both people we had were fantastic, they did their, they did their stuff, but the schools, you know, couldn't. It was the same thing with the cybersecurity specialist. We split that cost 50-50, and then whatever happened in the school budget those years, this was before redistricting, they had to get rid of those costs. So eventually, I was left funding both the communications and the cybersecurity professional. I think this is a conversation y'all have to have with the school district about their commitment to, to being unified on these issues, because I agree with you, Councilor Callaway-Trippe, I think if there was one communications and engage, if the, if the job posting that was in here was joint, I do think that your goal would be closer to being achieved, I really do. That's what I've thought for years, and I'm not trying to place blame here, but at the end of the day, the truth of the matter, and the whole staff knows it, they cut their portion of both of those positions, and then I was left paying for the whole one, and then eventually, the pressure came on my end, and I had to get rid of those positions. So, I think we have to, if we're going to do a joint position like that, we have to get extremely strong commitment from the school district that they are going to permanently fund this, and even if other cost pressures come on, you know, to save, say, a teacher or somebody else, like, they have to stay committed to it, because this was not sustainable. And I know Superintendent Gir knows the history of this, because he's been here the whole time, it just ran into those roadblocks, and I think we laid off the last person, two years ago, Julie, 23, 2023, it was a joint position, it was in 2023. So, it's been two years since we've had that, but I do agree with you on your concept. I just want to make sure people understand that, I couldn't agree more.
Well, to follow up, we have a new council-
You're right.
And we have a new school committee, and we are all committed to working together. So if it means somehow writing up some type of contractual agreement that this is going to happen, it benefits both entities, we work as one, and it saves both entities money. And I think we need to start getting everybody together, and I know I'm ahead of the game, but this should be an agenda item, just saying, where we bring everybody together, and we have a roundtable discussion.
I'm all aboard.
The only thing I'll, I'll point out with that, and I completely agree with, with everything Counselor Calloway-Trippe has said, is that we also have to realize that the schools, as, as a school committee member, Dave Callahan said earlier, are dealing with these unfunded mandates that make it, you know, you know, they, they get things that they have to fund, and if they don't have enough money, they still have to fund those things, and this will always be an addition if it's not coming from this place. So that's, still, we need to have that conversation.
Right, we need to.
Yeah.
But it could also be determined, based on the communication expert, how much of his or her time is towards municipal and how much is towards school, and the ratio of contribution could be based on that.
So I don't disagree, but if we do that, then, and the schools get funneled away for, because of mandates, then it should just end up being on the town side, and then we kind of, we're back where we are now. But, again, it's, it's absolutely worthwhile.
It's, it's, and my point is, is one person going to be able to do both jobs?
Right.
That's, that's the, that's the whole key, you know what I mean? The one that, six years ago, she was great. I mean, we lost a really good person when we laid her up, so.
Through the chair, I would just comment, I think, from speaking to one of the employees in the former position, it is very difficult to work for two, I mean, we're working together, and we're one entity, but we have very different priorities, and there were a lot of instances where the superintendent needed this now, and Jamie needed this now. So I think it is a tough position to split, because there are so many different priorities and deadlines and things going on. So I would even suggest, you know, we'd have to work carefully to set the expectations for that person of how to do that. I think the administrative support is probably a little bit easier when you're answering one phone line and transferring or taking tasks that aren't quite as time-sensitive, but it does get tricky when you're sharing a high-level job with different priorities. Just food for thought.
Go ahead.
Thank you for saying that. I was actually going to say the same thing, as someone who has worked in roles where my boss took a different position, and her, her duties were funneled, and I supported several people, it is, that is incredibly difficult. The other thing is, we're still paying, the town is still paying for this person, right? We're not saving any money by sharing it, sharing the role between the municipal side or between, you know, the administrator's office and the schools. You're still paying for the, the full-
Supreme.
Yeah, salary. And, you know, I, I don't know that the schools have indicated they have a need for this role, I mean, they may have, and if they do need it, then, you know, maybe then's a conversation to have about sharing it. But if they don't need it, then to say, you know, administrator's office needs this, we would like to share it, that's, that'd be putting in, you know, undue burden on them, then requiring them to pay for part of it. So I think that's, you know, a conversation to have with the superintendent Gir and the school committee first.
Mike, did you have something to say?
Without detraing from this conversation, I just want to focus on the resolution that's in front of you.
Yes, yeah.
It's very narrow. You basically passed a balanced budget back at the end of the last fiscal year for this fiscal year, which contains some assumptions. Now we know what the, whether the assumptions have worked out or not, they unfortunately did not, we came up short, and this is just a legal requirement to rebalance the budget in light of that by, by making two deductions that are shown.
Why don't we, why don't we move on and vote on this? I think we beat this up pretty good. So.
Oh, wait, hello. I hope you don't mind that I, hi, I'm Cory Shay, I work for the town of Franklin, I'm the Director of Arts and Culture and the Creative Economy, and myself, along with a few department heads, just had a few tidbits of information we want to contribute to this conversation. Is that all right?
Go ahead.
Since I'm here. All right, well, hi, everybody, congratulations, and hello, Franklin, how are all of you? As I said, my name is Cory Shay, and last week, councilors, I shuffled into your paperwork a one-pager about what my department is, and to give a little bit of context of what exactly that I do here. And this week, I handed you a much larger narrative for you to take, I also can send that PDF to you via email. Something that my dad once told me is that artists are the first to arrive, filling rundown factories and empty storefronts, making them beautiful, and then when the area flourishes, they get pushed out because they can no longer afford to be there. And he said this to me back in the 90s, and I have been pissed about it ever since, and that is why I'm dedicated to my position here, because my career is to ensure that creative people are seen as essential infrastructure for communities, and it's not a passing luxury. And beyond this personal note, I just want to make sure we're all speaking the same language when we're talking about arts and culture in Franklin. It isn't exclusive, it's not stuffy, it's not for the select few, arts and culture are for everyone. It spills into every age demographic, you can never age out of arts and culture. And for this community, it's about uplifting our other stories, celebrating our neighbors, our businesses, our schools, everything that makes Franklin unique. When we invest in community and creativity, we're creating spaces that bring people together, places to connect, not to divide. In today's world, online interactions often spiral into wild conflicts. Too often, people are defined by their digital footprint opposed to what their actual role in the community is. Jamie actually said this a few weeks ago, and it's just been stuck in my mind, of how Facebook has killed the town square, and it's just been something I've been replaying, because I just feel like that's exactly what my role is for. It's to help revive the town square, to create authentic shared spaces, community experiences, where residents can engage in a positive way with one another and with their families. And yes, all of this is all well and good, I am a community organizer, but I am strategic about how we do that. We are hustling the dollar here as per this conversation. I've been in this role for a year and nine months, and as I noted on last week's paperwork, my department has secured $33,000 in grants, we got a $50,000 public art earmark, some of the people in this very room actually got stipends for their artwork to be on display in Franklin. It's used to just, to attract visitors and create a vital downtown. Franklin's cultural events, here's, here's the big numbers, people. Franklin Cultural's events continue to drive the local economy, the meals, tax revenue, as you all just were talking about, last fiscal year reached $753,930. And the Think Franklin First gift card is currently generating in this year $12,000, and we're not even done with the fiscal year yet, which is now leading a total of $77,000 reinvested directly back into Franklin. And all of this is happening the past year, in nine months, as just part of the town budget, so that my one-person department is of 0.079% of the budget. And my department has helped now circulate almost $850,000 back into the local economy through all the things I just talked about. Also, just to throw out another number at you, the cultural council is meeting upstairs right now, and this year, we got $168,000 in requests for people that want to do arts and culture projects in Franklin for Franklin residents. So, there's a tangible increase from the fact that last year's was around $81,000. So art and culture is not an expense to trim, it is a foundational investment that bridges together our community, and I hope you'll join me all on this vision and realize that arts and culture make the pie bigger, as a lot of people have been talking about pies in context of the budget. And that's all I have to say, and I'm gonna-
Thank you.
Let someone else pop up.
Yeah, are you okay? I, I didn't realize this, Kelly and Felicia are always here, through you, Mr. Chairman, but I, I didn't realize the Library Board of Directors, I think, is here, and I think they might have said, they might have wanted to say something about the budget, so I just was told that the Council on Aging is here. Are you okay with a few comments from those couple boards? I think the budget was here, and I think there's, I think you're getting an idea of what's to come, that you're going to have a lot of late nights with a lot of feedback from a lot of people, but, but to Councilor Malloy's, why not?
They're here.
I mean, just maybe a few, yeah.
They're here.
I think veterans wanted to speak quick, if that's okay.
They got 30 seconds, go.
Deborah?
Yes, okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Town Councilors. My name is Shannon Nisbet, and I'm Franklin's Director of Veterans Services. This is my colleague, Deborah Martin, our Veterans Services Executive Assistant. You may know us from the patriotic events we coordinate in town, which is an important facet of our job, but only one facet. Tonight and beyond, in light of the five-year fiscal forecast, we will be talking about the many services we provide to Franklin veterans and their dependents. Excuse me. Our first core mission is to help veterans access the benefits they need and deserve. To this end, we've provided assistance to 104 clients this fiscal year, on average 23 per month. Even if someone calls us with a very specific request, we screen for many different things. Have they filed for VA disability and VA healthcare? Are they having financial trouble? Is their housing situation stable? Do they need counseling? We may be able to help them through programs at the federal, state, and local levels. I want to note the application process for these programs requires a great deal of time and specialized knowledge. We will be sharing more details at future meetings to convey a clear picture of our administrative workload and the significance of these benefits. Back to our client, whether we are dealing with a simple or complex situation, we take the time to actively listen and build trust. Confidentiality is absolute. We engage in client education, so our veterans understand what they are applying for and how the process works. Sometimes we get urgent calls, such as an eviction, and we have to drop almost everything to address that situation. When we're not busy with these tasks, we're working on our other core mission, building community. Many of our veterans live alone, and opportunities for socialization can be a lifeline. We coordinate the Veterans Day luncheon, Memorial Day breakfast, and Memorial Day ceremony. At the Franklin Senior Center, we leverage partnerships to offer our veterans monthly coffee socials, weekly free guitar classes, and free weekly yoga classes. We conduct outreach events, such as the recent She Rose Luncheon for Women Veterans. We work closely with our veterans organizations and community partners, and greatly appreciate all who donate to our town veteran funds and volunteer for our programs. Importantly, we collaborate with almost every town, department, and the schools in these efforts. When we ask for their help, they are always there. Lastly, I want to mention Deborah Martin, also manages the Veterans Memorial Walkway, the Veteran Display Case downstairs at Town Hall, and the Veterans Property Tax Work Off Program, which is similar in structure to the Senior Tax Work Off Program. These projects require a great deal of time, coordination, and attention to detail. We are honored and privileged to serve the veterans and their families- We are honored and privileged to serve the veterans and their families and the town of Franklin. We see the current budget situation as a unique opportunity for outreach, and we look forward to sharing more information at future meetings. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Sarah Amrall, Senior Center Director. I'll try and keep this short and also explain this might feel disjointed in this part of the meeting. But just so everyone's clear, we would have spoken during citizen comments, but because you were discussing budget, we held off. Right, Mark? Never know. Right? So we just, we were trying to follow all the rules. We got scared at the orientation last week, right? So if it feels, I know it's not directly related to what you're talking about, but we, all of the departments that are talking, it's a little bit nerve wracking to get up here. There was a memo that went out in August. And so we feel like we're here to ask you to be part of the team. We want to start the conversations now. So I'll try and cut mine back a little bit, but just wanted to talk about the Senior Center, since it is on that memo, to potentially be closed FY '27 or in the future. So again, just asking you genuinely, genuinely to have us be on your team. If you are a member of the Council on Aging Board, Friends Group, Community Member, or Staff Member, would you just raise your hand so they can see?
Oh, wow.
So thank you for letting us speak, because they're here for this. So again, we want to have conversations now, strategize now, because I really don't like making decisions when they're forced in a crisis. And I don't think most of you do either. If you don't know what we fully do, which is totally fine, but a lot of people think we're a building and we play bingo. While we take that very seriously, because I have any of my bingo folks in here, we truly are a lifeline. I don't, I say we, my staff, all of our people, the building, the community that is there, it's a lifeline. Last year alone, we ran over 4,000 programs, served over 18,000 meals, provided over 1,000 social services, offered 15,000-plus hours of respite care, and volunteers donated over 10,000 hours of time, which in a future time, I'll run numbers for you, because I love them, and how much money that actually saved the town by using volunteers. And we provide all of this at no or minimal cost. Nutritious meals, exercise classes, technology, transportation, caregiver and dementia support, fuel assistance, housing help, Medicare counseling, affordable nail and hair services, and critical social connection. As Director, my job is to support seniors, support my staff, and to be a reasonable steward of your tax dollars. But since that memo in August, now my days include some new things. I have community partners asking if we truly are closing. I have seniors sitting in my office crying, asking where they will go if this actually happens. That makes me emotional. Just give me a sec. And I have staff asking if they should look for a job. The honest answer is, I don't know. That uncertainty drains morale. It drains the community and drains time we should be spending planning, not fighting for survival. We also operate with zero program funding in the municipal budget. We bring in more than $250,000 annually through fees, our cafe, supportive day, and the gift shop. I'll go wicked quick. Cutting us, we're only 0.3% of the entire town budget. Who will meet these needs if we close? Social isolation alone increases the risk of heart disease by 29%, stroke by 32%, and dementia by 50%. So when prevention disappears, the burden shifts to police, fire, EMS, hospitals, and long-term care. And I just want to speak quickly to the seniors of Franklin. Your voices matter. I will fight for the center until the last penny, but your councilors want to hear from you. Tonight's agenda includes the full schedule, town council, finance, and office hours, which are right at the Senior Center. So if you need transportation, ask us. If you want to attend on Zoom, we have Chromebooks for rentals. If you don't know how to use Zoom, we'll teach you. So we want to help you be heard. And finally, I just want to say, if morale were based only on how much we love our jobs, my staff would be on cloud nine. My team shows up every day for a mission, not just a paycheck. But morale also depends on hope. And to feel hopeful, we need to feel that this council is fighting for us too. Thank you.
Okay, okay. We all know we love our seniors. I'm there too.
Thank you. Hi. Hello, everyone. Felicia Udi, the Library Director. And with me tonight is the entire Library Board of Directors, ladies, and the staff. Together, we want to welcome you, the new and returning Town Councilors, returning Town Councilors, sorry. We also wanted to take the opportunity, as Sarah has already mentioned, because we were also put on that August memo for a cut, we wanted to take this opportunity just to explain what it is the library does, a real brief explanation of the role that we play in the community. We, the library does have a tremendous value in the community. And our library, I call it our library because it's truly ours, is unique in so many different ways. Yes, we are the home of the first public lending library in the nation. But in addition to that, our building house is one of the most magnificent public art collections in the region. This is a huge asset that draws in scholars, artists, and visitors from across New England. We have been featured on PBS, Fox News, CBS, WBUR, and this coming Sunday, the Boston Sunday Globe. Now, the Franklin Library, all of us know, is more than just books. There is no other space in this town that is open to, meant for, and serves everyone in the community, supporting residents of every age, background, and circumstance. It is the, it is one of the most widely-used facilities in town, with the most accessible services for every age group. Every week, we do see hundreds of residents walk in the door, and they come for a variety of reasons, reasons that are different as everybody who lives in this town, to check out books and museum passes, to use the spaces, to check out, to use the computers, to use the computers, and to access all of our other services, just to name a few. And they do all of this for free. Did you know that you could get your taxes filed for you free of charge through the library's vital program? And we do all of this for less than 1% of the town's budget. Actually, the library's per capita spending is $35 per person annually. That's not even a cost of a hardcover book. So just think about it. $35 to provide services for an entire year to a Franklin resident, that's how much we invest in the library. Beyond the building, we have a robust relationship with the schools. We've been working closely with the literacy specialists and the classroom teachers to offer mobile library services across the district. In our population group, we are the gold standard for the development and provision of library services. When we compare ourselves to neighboring libraries in our population group, and I'm talking about Needham, Nedick, Norwood, Milford, Franklin has the lowest funding in the group, yet we rank first in our cost-effectiveness and operational efficiency. The numbers are truly staggering. I just want to give you a quick number, and then I'll round up. Last year alone, our staff of 12 offered 1,090 programs, and we had 43,000 attendees. Needham has a staff of 28. They offered 541 programs and logged in 18,000. And Nedick, with a staff of 38, offered 123 programs and had only 15,000 attendees. So in short, to round up, the Franklin Public Library delivers extraordinary value for a remarkably small investment. We strengthen education. We preserve culture. We build community. And we do it efficiently, cost-effectively, responsibly, and with a deep sense of pride in serving our community. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just can't read you Public Works Director. I don't have a board here tonight, but I have all of you, because we work for you. And I just want to bring up a couple of quick things. You know, I was mentioned that letter also, and you did cut. So in the last two years, my budget's down almost $800,000. And the biggest thing on that, unlike a lot of the folks or police and fire, on July 1st, you saw that. Okay? You saw those cuts, whether it was the ambulances, the school officers. Public Works, you didn't see it, because majority of that money came out of the roads maintenance. Okay? You're all gonna see this lack of maintenance five years down the road, because we're not doing the chip sealing that we usually do, the crack sealing, all this maintenance. And when these roads fail, it's exponential to fix them. So that's already happened. The other thing that, just to be quick, that we did start to see, and we see here all the time, the policy we had to go to is to go a trash barrel in and out. We got beat up on that. Okay? We're still picking up a lot of trash. There's a lot of barrels out there. Well, we basically just moved a lot closer to make it more efficient to do it. But we got a lot of pushback on that. And then the last thing that's coming up is the, the lighting, the downtown lighting. People haven't noticed. We couldn't put the lights back up in the downtown area. We've had to limit what we're doing on the common. This is hard for Public Works. The team has, we take so much pride in that, the beautification of our town. And we can't do it because we don't have the staffing or funding. It's hard on us. It's hard on our department. And I know it's, it's, some people like living in pretty things, but it costs a little money.
Yeah.
And that's such a small part of the budget. The lights, it's only like $8,000. Okay? On a $2.5 million budget. But we can't do it anymore. But it's very noticeable. And these little things that Public Works do, you're gonna start to see no more. So I just want to share that with you. Thank you.
All right. I think that's.
You're vote?
Huh?
Vote?
Yeah, we're gonna vote. Just before we vote.
Thank you.
Just before we vote, I do want to thank everyone for coming up. And I see my friend over there, Tina Potley. She does a great job down the Franklin food.
With that, we'll turn it to the clerk.
Do we still have Ted?
He turned the camera off. He said he was, had to put toothpicks in his eyes.
Oh, wait.
Oh, there he is.
There he is.
Take the toothpicks out, Ted.
Counselor, come here, Luscher.
Yes.
And Counselor Malloy?
Yes.
And Counselor Chukwu?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Morongello?
Yes.
Counselor Calloway Tripp?
Yes.
Counselor Grelle?
Yes.
Counselor Delorco?
Yes.
Motion. Moving on. Doc Ted said something. Resolution 25-73, Franklin Town Council's withdrawal of support to, of proposed Chapter 40B Affordable Housing Project located at 444 East Central Street? Clerk, will read the resolution?
Whereas by a 5 to 4 vote approving Resolution 2416, Franklin Town Council, acting on behalf of the Town of Franklin, formally expressed its support for proposed affordable rental housing project through the state's local initiative program, LIP, of up to 264 units to be developed on approximately 15 acres located at 444 East Central Street here and after project proposed by developer the Elvezos Group and/or TAG Central LLC, and directed the town administrator to prepare and sign a letter of support to Massachusetts' Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC's predecessor, State Agency, Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, for the proposed project, and to sign any EOHLC formerly DHCD applications and/or other forms, and to take any other action which EOHLC formerly DHCD required to demonstrate town support for the project. And whereas as a result of a local election that took place on November 4th, 2025, the Franklin Town Council has undergone a broad turnover of membership. Now therefore, the Franklin Town Council, acting on behalf of Town of Franklin, hereby withdraws its support for the proposed affordable renting housing project of up to 264 units, proposed to be developed on approximately 15 acres located at 444 East Central Street, and directs the town administrator to prepare and sign a letter to EOHLC informing them that the Franklin Town Council has withdrawn its support for the project, and to take any other action which EOHLC requires to confirm town's withdrawal of support. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Franklin Home Rule, Town of Franklin Home Rule.
Heard the resolution.
Motion. To, move.
Resolution.
Resolution. I don't know what I'm saying.
25-73.
25-71? Is that what you?
73.
73.
Ken?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Discussion, but.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse from this.
Yeah. I also need to recuse. I just want everyone to understand that as an abboter to the property that I need to recuse at this point. I've met with the State Ethics Commission. They said that I retain my ability to speak as a private citizen if I want to on behalf of this project. I don't really feel a need to. I feel like I have spoken on this quite a bit, and so people know where I stand on that. So I will be leaving the meeting at this point.
And Counselor Malloy is also an abboter too.
Well, not quite, but they told me.
Well, they told you. All right. We have discussion. We'll go to Jamie first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna open up, just to be clear. And then I know the proponent, you know, can be here to answer questions, and I believe their attorney has some correspondence. Just for the folks that came in late or came in early, there are two letters over here that I would encourage everybody to grab. I'm gonna read one of them, which is a very important letter from the state of Massachusetts Commonwealth. I think their representatives also have a letter over here with some of the arguments on the lip. I'm gonna read this out. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I want to make sure, because I think there has been, the number one question I think all of you are likely getting, as well as myself, is if the lip is repealed this evening, there's been, I think to one of the citizen comments earlier, rumors, misinformation, confusion, maybe genuine confusion. The town attorney and I have been consistent on this since the start. But to be clear, and I informed all of you this afternoon, last Friday, the attorneys for, after this was requested by the council last Wednesday by a couple of members, the proponent and their attorneys, Mr. Friedman, Mr. Freeman, excuse me, reached out to the state of Massachusetts to get clarification on this issue. I did not reach out to them. In fact, I wasn't even copied on the email. But they asked for a meeting with the General Counsel for the Secretary's Office of Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. I think it's really important for people to see this letter. It will be posted online tomorrow. We'll get it out there. I know Steve and hopefully Alan will post some of this too on The Observer and on Franklin Matters. But this is a letter I got last night at about four or five o'clock in, in the evening. And I did end up getting a call later that evening from the General Counsel. And for people who don't know who the General Counsel is, I know you do on the board, but that is the highest ranking attorney for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts at the housing agency. So you can't go any higher than this individual. Dear Town Administrator, Helen, I am writing regarding inquiries received by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities within the past several weeks relating to the proposed local initiative program at 444 East Central Street in Franklin. Specifically, we received questions on the demonstration of local approval that is acquired for a LIP project application. In response to these questions, represented to EOHLC as quote unquote hypothetical, which is very important, we provided general information on this email topic dated October 31st, 2025. In the letter that's over here, the attachment of the email, which was also posted on Franklin Matters on November 1st, which was widely publicized throughout the community, you can read in there in that attachment, the word hypothetical. It's come to our attention that this communication, while not intended to provide specific legal to provide specific legal advice or opinion, has resulted in confusion and misconceptions about the LAP process as it applies to 444 East Central Street, which we now seek to clarify. EOHLC received a completed LIP application for this project on October 31st, 2024. The application included a letter from the town's chief executive officer, that's me, confirming town support for the project after an affirmative vote by the council of five to four of Resolution dash 24 dash 16 dated June 5th, 2024, in which the Franklin Town Council voted to support this project. Again, it was a five to four vote. They, they have the attachment as presented as part of this letter. Following a review of the application and reliance on good faith representations of the town, EOHLC issued a determinative project eligibility, a PEL. For those that don't know what that is, at the ZVA hearing and all the other pieces, the PEL is a project eligibility letter that gets submitted after an approval of a LIP. That was issued earlier this year on February 12th, and that attachment is in the package as well. The PEL is a prerequisite for any application for a comprehensive permit and is conclusive evidence that the project has satisfied all project eligibility requirements. As noted in our October 31st communication, if there are any material changes to a project after the issuance of an LIP, PEL, the executive office must be notified immediately to secure an amendment in accordance with LIP guidelines. Material changes may include changes in the project's unit mix or development team, or any changes sufficiently substantial, such as the project is no longer consistent with what was previously approved by the CEO to EOHLC. Based on the information to us, available to us, we understand the Franklin Town Council is considering voting on a resolution to withdraw its support for 444 East Central Street LIP project based on recent changes in the town council membership. Please be advised that EOHLC does not consider turnover or change in a municipality's council or board membership to be a material change that would require an amendment to a previously issued PEL. It is also not considered a change substantial enough that the project could no longer be considered consistent with what the Franklin CEO and Franklin Town Council approved on June 5th, 2024. And in boldface print, the general counsel of this Commonwealth, accordingly, regardless of the outcome of any potential town council vote to rescind support based on council membership changes, EOHLC will not amend, withdraw, or rescind the PEL issued for this project on that basis. Therefore, the project sponsor is entitled to continue the public hearing process before the zoning board of appeals. So I, that, there's a couple, one more parent, well, actually, I should just finish off the letter. EOHLC firmly supports this project moving forward with its current review process before the zoning board. We emphasize a key component of the LIP is the fact that the developer and municipality are working together in concert on a proposed project. Local public officials are expected to act in good faith and to not unreasonably withhold support for proposed projects or project changes. We understand affordable housing development can be a complex and sensitive issue for municipalities. We hope the developer and the local officials continue to work together to ensure a comprehensive permit review process proceeds as required. That is signed off by the general counsel, by the executive office. So there's a couple of attachments in there. I wanted to make sure that this was clear. I think this is overwhelmingly the question that I have received and that most people have received throughout all of this. And so I'm going to start, stop there, but I wanted to make sure everybody had that as a background. And I know that this is probably very frustrating, and I'm very sorry for folks who, you know, have not seen it this way, or there's been misinformation in the community. I've certainly received my fair amount of blowback from residents and others from my comments at recent town council meetings. I've been asked numerous times. I think there is a misnomer that when we read guidelines or we do our own research, we forget about a bunch of things. We forget about case law, which you'll hear about at the ZVA hearings. We forget about previous precedent, and we think about, we don't, we don't remember or think about other factors that we don't know about. That actually is why we have a town attorney. And in an original correspondence in October, the same individual at EOHLC was asked, can we repeal the project with the rescinding of the LIP? Then the developer will have to start all over again at a starting line, and then the town can invoke safe harbor and block the project. And I've said consistently all along, as has the town attorney. You will not start over, and the town, the ZVA, by the way, can then not invoke safe harbor on a second crack. They had an opportunity to do that the first time. They didn't do that for whatever reasons. And I would also mention, and I'll probably talk about this later after some questions, I did send an email out to all of you on the council, but I did put it in my memo. By coincidence, EOHLC, the state housing authority, did issue their recent SHI index numbers, and as illustrated earlier by Mr. Mina Kelly, we are now at 11%. There were also discussions at the ZVA hearings of people in the community doing their own math and saying, oh, no, now with 121 Grove Street up, oh, now we're at 13 and a half percent, or at 14%. And this is like, to the person that spoke earlier at citizen comments, I think this is what an important factor is. And I, and I mean this respectfully to those who are on Facebook or online or on blogs. That is not where the facts are in oftentimes. That's where opinions are. That's where rumors are. This room, however uncomfortable and hot, I'm sorry, in Zoom, people can chime in, but our town officials have the facts. And one of the reasons why I always rejected the idea of people making up their own SHI based on their own numbers is because oftentimes they don't have the most, they don't have the most up-to-date data. They don't have what the state has. I too, myself, was kind of shocked that our number was at 11%. I did think with 121 Grove would be up at 12, 12 and a half, 13. But market rate units that have come on board have diluted that number. And this is exactly what happened in 2018 when Glenn Meadow came off our rolls. Okay, it came off, the town went below 10%. Some calculations in the public were wrong because they weren't looking at the accurate amount of occupancy permits giving up to the building commissioner. We went below 10%. And then for those that live on Cottage Street that know about Madeline Village, that's what you end up getting. So aside from this letter, all of you on the council have to also think about the policy discussion of being over 10%. That doesn't necessarily mean you can't vote to withdraw this, and whatever happens, happens, or you can't go your way. But I just want to also make sure people are aware that you're probably not going to get any other affordable housing complexes that go to the SHI for at least two or three more years. Franklin Ridge, if that opens in 2027 or 28, those 60 units will count towards the SHI. If Madeline Village ever gets out of court off Cottage Street, that would, those would go towards our SHI. But we also have a lot of other smaller developments through, you know, Giannetti's Blueberry Farm. You got the, you got the units uptown here off East Central Street. I mean, you do have even two houses on Kimberly, off Kimberly Ave, right? When you add up the twos here, the fives there, the market rates of 10 over here, 12 over here, a few over there, that's what makes me nervous. That's where you get to 11% when the state comes out with that number, and you say, geez, we're a lot closer to 10% and being under that 10% than what we thought. So aside from Mr. Mina Kelly's consistent request of what's the real SHI and what's the real number, I think I would say after the comments tonight, there's a true threat in the next two, three, four, five years, again, without Franklin Ridge, which does buy some capacity. You never know when you might be going bull at 10%. And now we're in a different conversation, and then the unfriendly 40Bs come, and then there's no concessions. There's no power the town has. And then that's what happened over here too on the corner of Chestnut. That was an unfriendly 40B that will end up getting built. And so I leave that as a background. I'm sure there'll be plenty more questions, Mr. Chairman, but I wanted to make sure that folks knew the update from the state on, on this issue. So I'm going to let the.
One question for you. What about the 60 houses on Pleasant Street?
So that's a great question. Those will all qualify. Okay, but tho, but those are very dependent on federal and state tax credit funding, which is about to get pretty much exonerated or obliterated at the federal level. And that's why Franklin Ridge.
That's why I brought it up.
Was so important to get done and spend everything because we had $1 million from Congress on Alkenclaws. Kudos to Brian Tabaner, Imi Love, and our planning staff for spending that money in our DPW quickly. So that, that earmark didn't get rescinded by the administration. We actually got it done, and we got the road built. And so all those tax credits that we were given from the governor and Secretary Augustus and all the other community preservation, all the other funding that goes into that, we've now got that financing done. So that should be safe. But the project on Pleasant Street could take many, many, many years to get done.
That's why I brought it up.
And I do think you're right. Like, I would not count on those anytime soon.
Okay. So I'm going to go to the council, and then I'll go to the audience. So I'll just start there and work my way down.
Sure.
First, just a statement, or just one point of clarification. In that letter, when they said that, you know, hypothetically, you know, it seemed that they were making the assumption that if we rescind support, it's based on the town council change. I would push back on that, you know, for, for two reasons. One, the prior town council did send that letter saying that they were not happy with some of the changes that were made. You know, so, you know, if we do rescind support, I would argue that that would be based not on the town council change, but the facts of the case today in terms of what we're seeing. So that is one point clarification. I don't, I don't know.
Through the chair.
Just, and I apologize, but just as one, take them one at each question at a time. So I think the proponent will probably speak to this. This is, again, it's very hard to follow. And again, housing law, case law, is probably the most complicated and challenging and difficult to deal with in Massachusetts. So when the council did do the original LIP that was approved, non-binding by the Planning and Conservation Commission, there was one project. When the ZVA hearing started, the ZVA chairman prioritized, not the council or the LIP or the state, the ZVA chose to go through a peer review notably on a higher amount of parking spaces for the project, saying, well, we're going to treat this like, that was a ZVA decision. As the hearings unfolded, and I think as many residents had just concerns about some of the concessions that were made, the council did write that letter. And then the proponent did go back to the ZVA to update their plans to mirror a lot closer to what was approved by the council. That being said, as based on a lot of feedback about buffer zones, fencing, you know, I'm just saying other issues, as the ZVA process has moved forward, the proponent has worked, I believe, with the ZVA on those mitigation issues and some of those other comments, particularly I think on like fencing buffer zones, the wetlands, and a variety of other, you know, the parking requirement now is not what the ZVA originally wanted. It's still not the 1.32, 1.3 that the council had approved, but there's somewhere in the middle where that, where that number is now in there. So again, when you get to substantial change, this is what a lot of regulations and court-related case law is over. So I think when you see that, I think the town attorney is going to speak to what is a substantial change, but also the proponent may be able to speak to this with their labor council.
Do we have any questions, Brian?
So the housing, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities has materials that address what they consider to be a quote unquote substantial change. That's a term of art as far as they're concerned. And it means something that changes the project in a, in a, in a greater impact than what was originally proposed. So if the number of units increase substantially, 10%, they actually gave as an example, that would, they would consider that a substantial change. In fact, in this case, I believe the number of units has been at the moment reduced. If you went from rental to ownership, they would treat that as a substantial change. As far as I understand, this is still proposed as a rental project, which would give us 100% credit for all the units. So there's nothing that's been, even with the parking and the readjustment, there's nothing that this state agency would consider to be a quote unquote substantial change. And they've made it clear that it's their decision based on the information submitted to them by municipality, the applicant, and others, but it's fine, it's, it's, it's finally the buck stops here. It's EOHLC's final decision whether or not to rescind the PEL, the project eligibility letter.
No, he's still got the. So, you know, that, I hear that. I still have some concerns about the site and the specifications of the bill that, that, you know, that seems to be one of the things I've been hearing a lot about. I do, on the other hand, also have questions about what happens to that space if this doesn't go through. Do we have, is there other interest in that space?
I don't think, I think that's a contractual issue between the proponent and the landowner, but I would mention, maybe you're getting at this, that is zone commercial two. So you could, eventually, they could put in heavy manufacturing, you know, anything you see here on East Central Street could be built there. Actually, the other commercial two zone is up at West Central Street. So if you think about fast food restaurants, I believe a lot of those uses are in there. That would be determined by the building commissioner. But just to give you an idea with commercial two, you know, that is zoned to commercial district. So you could have a manufacturing plant, a welding plant, you could have a car dealership, grocery, you know. Obviously, some of those uses would be hard because of the wet, because of the wetlands, right?
Exactly.
You'd have to work around that. But I just want to make sure you're, I think that's what your question was.
Yeah, and then in terms of profitability, I would, I would imagine that at least from a revenue standpoint for the town, this might be a better outcome than.
Could you speak up, please? We have a hard time hearing.
Sure. I'm trying to speak into the mic. I'm sorry.
That's amplified. That's just for broadcasting.
Oh, okay. But it does, so, you know, my thinking then is that the proposal right now would be, you know, better financially for the town than a fast food restaurant or something along those lines. Is that, is that accurate? Am I, am I thinking about that the right way?
I would venture down the aisle that, you know, the housing use is probably going to have a higher land value in totality than one commercial business. You have a commercial business there right now.
Right.
And the property valuation is, I believe, 1.5 million for that parcel. So that's what your tax base is off that parcel. I think as people have said at the ZVA hearings, and I think people accurately compare this to 117 D Nav. Now, 117 D Nav is eight acres larger than this. So it's apples and oranges, right? But that property of 117 D Nav where there's no affordable units, none of that is qualified on our SHI, that parcel is now valued at probably up near its 50, 60, 70 million because of the residential use that's there, because the valuation is going to be much higher for that residential use for all of the reasons that we know in Massachusetts, because housing, that land is very valuable for residential uses.
And then the other thing that I, feels like I'm hearing is even if we do rescind the LIP, that doesn't stop, that doesn't stop this process. You know, what does is if they can't get through ZVA. Am I, am I understanding that correctly, or am I misunderstanding? Okay, so that's, so that's really the getting point. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
I'm just going to go right down.
All right. So I'll start, I feel like I'm going to echo a lot of the things that Counselor Juku just said, but maybe take some of them a little bit further. So first of all, the two attorneys' roles comment about the significant changes that require an amendment or to the project. I believe that was in the letter from the project's attorney. That wasn't, I don't believe that the state used the phrase significant changes at all in their letter. In fact, the guidelines for a LIP say that to, you have to amend the determination of a project eligibility, the PEL letter, for any material change, which is, their examples are change in the development team, the number of units, unit mix, size, design, location, extension of the term of determination of project eligibility, proposed sale of the project, et cetera. So a few of those actually are relevant to this project. There's been a change in the number of units in the design, things like that. So according to this, it says DHCD shall be notified immediately if either, oh, first of all, I just want to say they require determination, requires in capital letters. That's their emphasis, not mine. And it says DHCD shall be notified immediately if either developer or the municipality anticipates any material change in the terms of the initial determination of project eligibility. I don't know if that has happened, if there's been any notification about a material change in this project. Again, I'm basing this off the guidelines that say that that's required. And furthermore, to the point that Counselor Juku made about it being. And furthermore, to the point that Councilor Juco made about it being based off of the previous council's letter, I, I still, I maintain that that is still an accurate statement. I think, I actually would like to entertain a motion to amend the legis, the resolution here and remove, can I do this now? Can I just say it in the middle? Okay, in the mic on. I would like to strike the second paragraph that says, whereas as a result of a local election that took place on November 4th, 2025, the Franklin Town Council has undergone, undergone a broad turnover of membership. I would like to change that to say, whereas as a result of many material changes made to the project after local approval was granted, the Franklin Town Council signed a letter on August 28th, 2025, indicating that they no longer approved the amended project. Let's set that.
So I have a amendment to the resolution and a second. So.
I would second the amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's already second.
Well, there's a delay over the ocean.
So now we will vote on the amendment, right?
Discussion if you need to.
Discussion if you need it.
And the, the only discussion I'll say is that.
Perfect.
Councilor Griffith, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, it's a great. We will, you will vote on the amendment to the resolution as it stands right now, so.
Okay. I will have to do this paper in a second, but, um, Councilor Juco?
Yes.
Griffith, yes?
Clarification. Are we voting on the amendment?
Amendment.
So when he says that, we're changing the wording.
Yeah.
Just to the amendment.
Okay.
Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Councilor Morinjello?
Yes.
Councilor Calway-Trip?
Yes.
Councilor, or Chairman Delarko?
Yes.
And Ted.
Oh, Ted. Ted. I'm sorry, Councilor, from your letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Now we have to move.
Um, just lose discussion, please.
Yeah, continue discussion.
You need to note that amendment.
We have to move the resolution as amended.
No, no, I'm, we're still in discussion, I think.
Right, we gotta move into amendment and then we'll go back to the discussion.
It's thought that was done.
No, we just voted.
No, it's done, we're fine, but we're, I'm just saying, I'm just noting that we, uh, it's amended. So now we're gonna discuss it.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So we're still, I'm going right down the line. So Councilor Blank and then, you know.
You can go this way, we're doing it back.
All right. Okay.
Oh, good, 'cause everybody, I took everything I prepared. I was gonna say the same thing as, um, Councilor Griffith. The amendment was incorrect, so that's fixed, so I'm happy. I do have a copy of the letter that was presented to the ZBA that specifies that there were dramatic changes and it's not anything close to the original project. I have an issue because of the material changes. We started with like, I think it was 18 variances. We're up to over 33 now. We went from three story to four stories. Let's take a look at the original diagram and see how close they were to the abutters and then look at the present one and see how close to their abutters. They are now closer to the abutters property line than they were originally. That's a very big material change. We have listened to residents on a regular basis and as one who frequented all these meetings and watched all the ZBA meetings, even if I wasn't present and before I was elected in this chair, trust me when I say I have heard every resident over and over again with the same pleas, but just for different circumstances. So, um, basically, I'm going to make a, a statement and, um, I'm gonna read it off the paper so that way I don't stumble over my words. Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow council members, town administrator and the residents of Franklin. Tonight I speak to affirm our duty, not just as elected officials, but as guardians of public trust. The local initiative program or LIP is built on a partnership between municipality and developers. The partnership is not permanent, it is conditional. It is based on a mutual agreement and shared understanding of the project's scope. When the LIP 40B project undergoes material changes such as a significant increase in variances, a change in building height, unit count or design and our wetlands, the law is clear. According to Massachusetts Comprehensive Permit Guidelines, the determination of the project eligibility must be amended and the municipality must notify immediately. More importantly, the chief executive officer of the town, this council, must concur with those changes for the project to continue in the LIP. And we don't. We do not concur. We are fully within our legal rights to rescind our support. We, if, and if we do, the project cannot proceed under the LIP. The developer would need to refile under a different program and begin a process anew because it was denied under material changes. This is not obstruction, this is procedure. It is the very mechanism that protects our community from being sidelined when a project evolves beyond what is originally agreed upon. And let me be clear, the council's decision to reassess or withdraw is not anti-housing. It is pro-resident. It is about ensuring that Franklin's voice is heard, our zoning integrity is respected and that our residents, homeowners or renters alike, are not asked to accept a project that no longer reflects the original terms of partnership. We are not denying affordable housing. We are defending responsible governance. We are standing up for transparency, due process and for the right of Franklin's residents to shape the future of our town. Thank you.
Jane, that's what we voted for.
Yeah, Brian.
All right, all right, all right, keep going, I'll just go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a bunch of questions for the developer, some for Attorney Sorrell and then Jamie and then a comment. First question is for the proponent of the project. Approximately, and if this is, legally you can't say this, let me know. Approximately, how much have you invested in this project since the LIP was first approved? And approximately, how much would you have to invest to receive a new Pell from a different subsidizing agency?
Well, for the record, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, my name is Attorney Jesse Schomer, law firm of Dane Torpey up in Boston. I appreciate all of you have received my, my letter and much less succinct than the EO HLC, which just rolls right off the tongue, I think everybody would agree. Much less succinct than their letter, so I appreciate everybody's attention with reading that. I don't wanna get into the dollars and cents, but the, the cost of it to go back to a different subsidizing agency would be significant. I would say in the order of five to six figures. To, to correct the record, there's been, I think, some confusion about what the process of that is. It is, it is not an accurate statement to say that the developer in that situation would go back to the starting line. Once a project has a project eligibility letter or a PEL, that's essentially the ticket to the dance. And, and once you have your entry into the door, you're in the dance. This project has a PEL, as the HLC's letter notes, that PEL is conclusive evidence of project eligibility, regardless of what this board does and regardless of the reason for taking that action. What that means is for the developer, once we're in the door, we can go to a different subsidizing agency, a different subsidizing program or for a different program within the same subsidizing agency and get a new PEL without restarting the process. That happens all the time with projects like this. So again, I, hopefully I've answered your question a little bit, maybe gone astray of, of the specifics.
That's good. And then another question I have is what feedback from the abutters have you incorporated into the project?
So my client can speak to that a little bit more specifically, but to speak, I guess, to the, to the changes that have been made to the project, from our perspective, those changes have all been to respond to feedback, both from abutters, from the zoning board of appeals, the peer reviewers that were retained by the zoning board of appeals and through the conservation commission process. My practice, councilors, is primarily chapter 40B development. I do that all the time. It's a very complicated process and I would say it's an iterative process. So there's never been a project that I can remember that came in the door and left exactly the same as it was when it came in the door. They always change. Through the course of the public hearing, little tweaks are made to respond to what the zoning board wants, to what the CONCOM wants, to what the peer reviewers want. The way that the process typically works is the notice to the subsidizing agency and the amendment of the eligibility findings happens after the zoning board of appeals review is complete. During the process, it's called final approval. They're reviewing that under the standards of typically the substantial or insubstantial change, although I do recognize that HLC's letter referenced some other standards with respect to materiality, I believe. I would remind the councilors that the HLC's guidelines also require that the board take action that is reasonable and not unreasonably withhold your support for project changes. I say that because in this instance, the changes that we're talking about have been for the benefit of the project and increased mitigation for abutters. So what does that mean? Reduction in unit count, reduction in roof heights, increased buffer and setbacks to abutters, as well as the many benefits to the community. So mitigation payments, public infrastructure improvements that are being made at the developer's cost, land donation to the, to the town of Franklin, revenue, increased revenue as your town administrator mentioned, based on the, the heightened valuation of the property. That would also include building permit fees. That'll be substantial revenue to the town. A lot of jobs being created through the construction of this project. We're hoping that those will be local jobs, support and stimulate the local economy, excise taxes with the vehicles that are associated with the revenue of the residents of this project. There's a lot of financial benefits as well as mitigation efforts, to your point, that have been made to the, to the project. But I, I wanna pause if I may and offer my client the opportunity to, to speak to that a little bit more in detail.
Sure. No, I, I think AJ Alavie says with Tax Central LLC representing, or with the applicant, I think Jesse did a good job overall summarizing some of the changes we've made. It's, it's true. All the changes we've made have actually been to the benefit of the neighborhood and the town and at the request of the board, the commission and peer review consultants. So the changes include a reduction in building roof heights. So we changed from slope roofs to flat roofs to reduce the height of the building to the benefit of the neighbors. We increased the building setback by nearly 20 feet, 18 feet to be exact, from the abutters. We reduced the unit count by about, by, by 10 units in order to respond to the zoning board's parking needs as well as just reduce the project in scale for some feedback we heard. We increased the eastern buffer area substantially. It's now more than a half of an acre and at the maximum distance of 105 linear feet between our property line and our project's limit of work. And we did that by adding a nearly 300-foot-long retaining wall, which is a substantial cost to us. So now we preserved a substantial amount of existing forest that's along our eastern side. And in addition to that, we added approximately $30,000 of new trees, which will fill in additional buffer for the benefit of the abutters. We also improved the fence to a vinyl stockade fence, six feet tall. And then we also reduced the number of buildings near the abutters, so we removed one building. All these immaterial changes were part of the comprehensive permit process. We did it out of good faith, working with the town. That's exactly what a friendly 40B process looks like. We have completed civil peer review as of today. We, we completed, we, we received a letter from the ZBA's civil peer reviewer, which had a lot of these comments in his original letter, which we responded to by working together with the zoning board, coordinating with the peer reviewer and making all these improvements that I just discussed. So the, the project's smaller now. It features the shortest roof heights of any project iteration that we've showed. It features a parking ratio that meets the ZBA, so we're balancing comments between, hey, they want a bunch more parking and we need to make the project work. So we, we met the ZBA's parking requirements and we have a project that results in a better project for the neighborhood and something we know we can build. So we're pleased with the process that we've gone through with the board as well as the commission and we, it's consistent with the plan that the original, the old town council approved and now it's just even better through all the enhancements and improvements that I just mentioned. That's, that's it.
So I'm glad to hear about the vinyl fence. I actually received an email regarding that being a sticking point for some folks that they thought it was gonna be chain link. So just making sure that, that is in fact vinyl going forward so that it blocks the view of the parking.
Yes, it is.
One of the questions was regarding traffic mitigation specifically. In the past, we've heard something about, you know, a study to do with the 140 King Street intersection as well as a bus route, supporting a bus route or blocking trails. Are those things you're still committed to?
We haven't gotten to the stage of, of discussing and looking at conditions of approval in the decision with the zoning board, but certainly everything I've, I've said on the record with the council and the ZBA is, is open for consideration. So we haven't gotten to that stage quite yet, but we are near, near that stage now. So certainly looking forward to talking about mitigation measures that we can give to the town.
Okay, I think there was a letter between, and I don't know if Town Administrator Helen can speak to this, between your group and Town Administrator Helen regarding some of those mitigation strategies. Is that, it was in a document somewhere, there was some letter, no letter? Okay.
I don't, yeah, I don't, as I've said many times before, just for the record while there's an audience, I don't get involved with boards on their mitigation issues. As you know, the towns had problems with that in the past, back in the 90s, and so I don't get involved with that. Those boards are in charge of doing that. There's a thorough series of requirements the applicant has to put forward. It gets peer reviewed at the applicant's expense, our choice of peer review. And so at some point, that peer review and the original proposal will get refereed by planning board, conservation commission, zoning board of appeals, and then they identify what the mitigation is. And by the way, they do work with our town engineer, Mike Maglio usually is probably the most involved and the DPW is the most involved just because mitigation is probably gonna be somewhere relative to infrastructure. So when those boards ask, our town staff, our town engineer is at every planning board meeting, but they weigh in at some point on a comment letter from the fire department, et cetera. And so any mitigation from those concerns that may arise come from those departments.
Yeah, like, for example, just one of those many things include upgrading the sewer pump station that's across the street from our parcel. That's just one of those things that we haven't worked out yet, quite the details, but we're willing to contribute to assuming our impacts require it, so.
And the big question, I think, or some, I mean, that I think is relevant to the conversation is the, I've heard from others, is the tax revenue. About how much tax revenue do you expect that this would bring into the town?
We'd have to, to run some numbers based on the expected valuation and it's tough to, to do backup envelope.
I can, I can speak to what the exist, some of your existing communities, I think, bring in in tax revenue. I'll just speak to Station 117, just because I heard it the other day at one of our public hearings. We actually had somebody show up and they were supportive of our project and they mentioned the tax revenue that Station 117 brings to town. I think it's almost a million dollars a year. I wanna say it was around 900 grand, maybe, something like that. That's a similar sized project to ours. It's all market rate units. Every property has different variables when it comes to assessing, but just to give you kind of an idea of the numbers we're talking about, and that's, that's yearly. And that's in addition to the, the mitigation measures that we haven't even started talking to the zoning board about.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add relevant to the conversation? I still have a question for, for the Attorney, for the Attorney Sorrell, but I just wanted to give you the opportunity to add anything to the conversation.
No, I, I appreciate that, counselor. I would just like to say that, you know, I, I think working with the town, we've been doing it in good faith the entire time. The comprehensive permit process has gone how it's supposed to, I would say, in a friendly 40B. Iterations after iterations, balancing comments from different departments, whether they want more parking, whether they can bear with less parking. I mean, all of these, these, these parts of the process are commonplace when it comes to a comprehensive permit. At the same time, we've also been doing a, a notice of intent with the conservation commission. So we've had a peer reviewer reviewing two aspects of the project for conservation, which was beta, doing stormwater and wetland review. And then we also had two different peer reviewers from traffic, or sorry, from ZBA. So we get a bunch of comments thrown at us from different departments, different peer reviewers, and we try to respond the best we can with different iterations of plans. That's why you saw the second iteration of the plan set, all four stories more parking. That was one of the comments that we heard from the board that was really important. Then when we submitted that, we heard, hey, can you go back to the, you know, something different? That's better for the neighbors, better for the abutters. We did that and that's what we submitted. We submitted two different iterations, actually. The second one. The second one ended up increasing the buffer substantially. So there's going to be a forest of trees, essentially, as shown on our plans that we submitted to the board revised. That's what we're proposing for approval. So.
Thank you. I had a question through the chair for Attorney Sirrell. We were talking about through our discussion earlier about the difference between significant changes versus material changes. Do, does a decrease rather than increase count as a significant change? If it was triggered by the ZBA and the abutters rather than the developer, is it still a significant change? Do changes in this project, under your opinion, count as significant?
Reductions are not considered changes, a negative change. Increases in the number of unit counts or the number of bedrooms, for instance, significant, that would be taken into account, not reduction.
So in your opinion, you know, if we were to try to prove that we, that the developer made a significant change, we would fall flat?
No.
No.
Four stories.
No.
It's gone up.
No.
Either of you could respond to that?
To you, Mr. Chairman. It's very hard, because as the town attorney mentioned a minute ago, EUHLC has the final say on this. So they're the ones that are going to determine the substantial change. What I think Attorney Sirrell is articulating is if the proponent went to the ZBA and said, we're going to go apply for 340 units, that's a substantial change. I don't, and this is just my opinion, but I have no final or even remote, they're not, EUHLC is not going to ask me my opinion on this, just so we're clear. I don't think anything that he spoke to is going to be seen as a substantial change in a negative light, in the sense that what Councilor Morinjello says, just because they changed the buffer zone is not a negative change. So EUHLC is going to say, yeah, it changed, but it's not substantial and it was a concession. So what I think Attorney Sirrell said was the most obvious. If they went to ZBA and applied for 40 more units, yeah, that's a substantial change, but that's not what happened. They, while I understand everybody would like it lower than 10 units than they conceded to, I understand that's the feeling people have, but EUHLC is not going to say you went from 264 units to 254, and therefore the project eligibility changes. I hope that was clear.
No, that's clear. That's very clear. And then my, for Attorney Sirrell, my concern is about liability to the town. So if we vote on this proposal, what is our liability? And if you can't answer that, I understand, but I just want to get a sense of how that would impact us.
Let's just put it this way. You're adding another layer of legal complexity. The matter is pending for hearing before the ZBA right now. They're well into the process. There's frankly, no guarantee that they're going to approve the project outright. They may approve the project with conditions. They may impose conditions, which again, that's not the final say, because if the applicant feels that the conditions, even though they got an approval, if the conditions either by themselves or in combination are viewed by the developer as uneconomic to the project, that is subject to appeal as well. And the problem is with the appeal, it's an administrative appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee, which is, although it's called that, it's a state agency, and from there to the Superior Court. And the court review, if HAC, however they determine, and they tend frankly to be very pro-developer, pro-housing creation, in my experience, whatever decision they render is highly unlikely to be overturned in court. It's a limited judicial review, and again, the philosophy right now is even more so than it ever was. It's housing, whether affordable or not. And the perfect example of that is the Milton decision, where the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts went out of their way to emphasize the need for increased housing of any kind. So that's the context that you're in. And so you have a known here, you have the ability to negotiate to some degree, so you have some control over it, and you're basically running the risk that you lose all that. So that's where it is.
One last question, and then I'll have a comment with regards to this. So like, is there a risk that if we vote in favor of this resolution, it could impact our capital budget through liability?
Well, we don't have, I mean, for a case like this, you know, we don't have a lot of legal expenses in the budget. I mean, it's a $60,000 annual expenditure in the operating budget. We're a very rare town where the HR director and I don't use labor council for collective bargaining. We do it in-house. That's rare. I know of towns that spend a half a million dollars a year on legal bills alone, just on labor or bargaining, okay? Not getting sued, litigation, solar, cannabis, specialty legal costs. The idea that, when I talk to my colleagues, that we have a $60,000 a year legal expense line item outside of the in-house attorney, they look at us and go, what are you talking about? And the reality is, is that this town has been exceptionally good for a long time with Mark at the helm, but also our town boards have done a very good job not being overly sued. And so would it impact the capital budget? I don't know. I can tell you this, I got to find the money somewhere. If there's litigation against the town council, against the town, if there's a variety of other charges, if there's some other claims that we have to file with. I'll give you an example. When we denied Dean College's liquor license five years ago, just to have one lawyer go to an administrative hearing, cost me five grand. So that was one day, four hours, six or seven prep hours, whatever it was it took for the attorney, and that was like the easiest court case you could ever have. It was five grand out of our 60 grand budget. And we lost. Right. And.
I remember that. I voted no.
Yeah, right. Right. Because then they made you come back and vote it again. So I think part of the consideration you're going to want to at least make is, you know, do you want to put the town in that position at some point? And I can't say whether we're going to or not, but I think as Mark eloquently said, tonight's vote is putting the town in an exceptionally more position of legal complexity.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to address briefly your question, counselor, I want to make it clear in the context of liability to the town and the question, the developer is not sitting here thinking that we want to be suing the town. That is not, absolutely not what we want to be doing here. We're not threatening litigation. We absolutely do not want to be in that business. However, if the council votes as you do, my client has to protect his investment in the property and the project. To your point earlier, our investment in the property is significant, and the investment into getting another project eligibility letter would be significant. And I say this only to mention that the costs that are incurred by having to take these actions to defend the project and protect my client's rights will come with an offset on our end with respect to things like mitigation payments. If there's less money available, if we have increased costs, because we have to go back to mass housing and get a new PEL, that's less money that's available on our end, because the project ultimately has to pencil out for us as well. And I just, to return to your earlier point, counselor, about the financial benefits to the town and the revenue, I think it's apropos, the hearing that you just had before this matter with respect to the funding challenges that faces all communities, frankly, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This project will bring significant revenue to the town, and we hope avoiding going down the road that the council is considering will avoid further expenses that are unnecessary from our perspective, and will allow the zoning board to conclude its review of the project so that our client can get to the business of building this project as opposed to something commercial, which is potentially much more impactful on the abutters.
Thank you for your comments. And I would just like to say, originally, you know, on the campaign trail, I thought, well, if it doesn't make a difference, I would vote in favor of repeal. But it doesn't make a difference in terms of, you know, our finances and our capital budget, you know, if we, as well as our operating budget. So I think that, you know, in terms of repeal, in terms of the property you mentioned as an analog, there's 900,000 equivalent revenue that a similar project brings in. And I just plug that into the Division of Local Services, Department of Revenue, property tax calculator. And if you divide that among all the households in Franklin, that would equal a $75 tax bill that would either get into prevent or reduction in services or give them out to people. So that's a real significant amount that people, you know, affects people personally, the services they get, or the services they would lose if this measure goes forward and it actually does result in a repeal of the project. So I want to point that out. And I do want to, you know, acknowledge that there was one constituent who reached out to me who felt there isn't any, one of the big concerns I heard about the project had been traffic. And all along that area, and I go to the pharmacy, I hit the traffic too, and it stinks. But there is something we can do about it. We can look at the intersection of 140 and King Street, and we could accelerate that project to get that intersection fixed. And if we focus all that energy, all the energy that, towards the opposition to this project, towards fixing that intersection, I think we'd be a lot better off as a town. I also think that, you know, as a counselor, I have to look at all the stakeholders. I have to look at people here in this room. We're going to, you know, I look forward to hearing from some of you and your comments, and I am listening. I do want to hear what you have to say. I have to listen, look at people who aren't here, who are potential tenants. We have over 200 people who want to make this Franklin their home. And we have to take their concerns into account. We have to look at the business owners, who have people who are employees, who want people to work at their businesses, or who want to patronize their businesses, who will be new members of our town. We have to look at the employees who are going to be affected by this budget, and the revenue that's going to come in by this budget. And we have to look at all these different factors. As a counselor, I have to look at those things. But I do, I don't want to give the impression that, you know, I'm not listening. I did mention some of the emails I've received, and I'm listening to your feedback, and I'm trying to respond to that feedback. And I think as a town, you know, just because the outcome of this vote, or what I may vote, isn't what you like, doesn't mean I'm not listening. I do care about the whole town, and I want to make a difference for all of you. So with that, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Blank?
You can go to Ted if you'd like.
Ted. Hello.
Well, it is now 3:00 AM here locally, so I can have comments as best I can before signing off. What a mess. What a great, big, colossal mess this whole thing has become. And clearly, by the comments, by the election results, and by the people in the room, the people of Franklin do not want this project. That is ultimately what we're hoping. And it sounds like any sort of repeal vote today is ceremonial at best, because Jamie read us a legal opinion from the state that the project's still going to move forward through its channels. It's still going to go through ZBA. The developer is doing the things that he's been asked to do and showing good faith, which I certainly appreciate. So our vote tonight would simply be saying to the residents, a year and a half too late, that we're listening and that you don't want the project, but it's going to move forward anyway. And that is really, really unfortunate. I sat there a year and a half ago with Counselor Delorko and others and said, it's a nice project, it's in a bad spot. There's too many variances needed. There's traffic concerns. There's the butter issues. There's conservation issues. There's water issues. We named them all a year and a half ago. And it moved forward anyway on a.
I think he was going to say the close five to four vote. That's what he was going to say.
Did we lose him?
Yeah, we lost.
He'll come back in a second.
All right. Go to. Ted, are you there?
All right, why don't you? Yeah, I mean, I'll keep this brief, because I do want to hear from the folks in the crowd. I mean, Ted hit it on the notes. I mean, this is a, excuse my French, a freaking mess. It really is. Yes, I, we were elected partly for this. I will say this, Max, if you want to, if you actually put an override on for $200,000 to pay the legal bill for this, you would literally get an override vote. This would pass. This would be the only vote that's probably going to pass an override.
I got you there, Mike.
The cost literally for this particular item. I did have, I did pick up one paragraph in your response, attorney, that kind of concerned me, and I'm going to read it, and I would like to get some clarification. It said, "In sum, even if the council votes to withdraw support for the project, HAC case law establishes that the applicant is entitled to a reasonable period of time to either negotiate with the town with respect to getting back the town's support for the project, or to seek a Pell from a different subsidizing agency under a different subsidy program." Right. "It is anticipated that this, that in this scenario, the applicant would do the latter." That comment right there shows that there's not a good faith effort to even try and bring this home.
That's right.
If you stood there today and said, we're quite frank, I don't know what the specifics are as to why we got to close the hearing by December 31st, if that's a requirement that you all have now put on us, or it's not, it's just a requirement. But the fact that we're trying to jam this through by December, and you're not willing to have a discussion, a little bit more talking, because there are some concerns that I have out there. A question was asked, what about the bus route? What about that stuff? Your response was, well, no one's brought that up, and it only came up the ZBA. I don't think the ZBA is going to put that as a condition. I don't believe the ZBA has the scope to do that. Correct me if I'm wrong through you to the council or the chairman or the administrator.
Bus stops?
In the, in the letter that you sent to the council, it talked about they would, they would, if I bring up the letter, it talked about they would look at subsidizing the Gatter bus stop, they would subsidize. There were like, what other things did you mention?
The walking trails.
The walking trails, and there was one other thing.
The intersection, King Street.
And King Street intersection, to his point, that they would fund that. That has probably not been discussed in any of the meetings, so they're going to walk out of here without having to fund that stuff. They talked about, way about 175 feet, that they were going to, 175 feet, that's a long 140. My point is, I'm getting very passionate about this. My point is, is that if they just said, we'd willing to sit down and talk a little bit more, I think that's what we're looking for. But right now, I am willing, I am, that's why I'm willing to vote this, because I'm, I'll fight to the end on this right now, because that one paragraph set me off.
I agree.
I'm done for now.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah.
So respectfully to Mr. LeBlanc, the intent of that paragraph was, it's not intended to be a threat in any way. What it was, was recognizing the reality of the situation for my client. As I mentioned at the start of my letter, the LIP program is intended to be a public-private partnership between the municipality and the developer. The municipality is a co-signer of the application, in fact. What happens in a relationship where one partner indicates that they no longer support proceeding, the other partner has to protect their interest. And that's all I meant by it. That's the reason why we have to, if the council takes the action to rescind your support, we have to respond to that and take that as an indication that you no longer support the project. In that situation, we would need to find another partner, which would be most likely mass housing. That's all that was intended by it. It wasn't intended as a threat, veiled or otherwise.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead, Jamie.
I appreciate it, attorney. I was confused by the question, Counselor LeBlanc, a little bit. And I do want to address the bus stop and the intersection down here. And I think through the ZBA hearings, if you've watched them for the last year, a lot of these issues have come up, and there have been responses to all of these issues. of these issues have come up, and there have been responses to all of these issues at some point. I don't remember where the walking trails part was, but I know that was part of the non-binding review, okay? The attorney Schumer, why I was confused was, we are here telling them we want to rescind the application. That wasn't them coming to us. So that actually is on all of you. It is on the council that said, "We ran an election on this, people spoke in some sort of way, nobody can define," although Stobarts obviously was an issue in the election, but it's not, can't be described as the defining, the one that absolutely, you referenced this earlier yourself, it was a factor, but there are other factors. But the council initiated this discussion, so I think the attorney has to say something like that. The second piece is on the King Street. Just so, again, I think many of you have heard this before, so apologize. That intersection down there is an eight-digit number. That is not going to be fixed anytime soon. We have done, we have, the DPW has done some conceptual concepts, I think you and I might have talked about it, I can't remember who I've talked to about this, both Pleasant Street and Chestnut, as well as up here, at some point are going to be rotaries. Those are a long way away. Both of those projects are 10-plus million dollars. The one down here also requires two eminent domain takings of the chiropractor building and the house across the street to make it fit. I think with the proponent, and I think AJ, or somebody has to maybe talk about this, because I think what councillor LeBlanc is getting to is, if he's hearing of concerns about the intersection in King and Chestnut, if we're hearing about walking trails, if we're hearing about bus stops, if we're hearing, whatever the concerns are, well, they're here right now, so maybe they could speak to some of those issues, so we don't feel like either councillors or citizens have this, have no answer. But I do believe that these issues have been talked about at the ZBA, and I think the Gatter bus stop, as well as the study money that they're proposing down for the King, for the intersection, I think those are proposed mitigation measures. I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure that's the case. Is that the case, Mr. LeBlanc?
It's impossible for me to encapsulate, like, the entire year process that we've been going through with the board and ZBA, and every single item, some of which was just mentioned by Jamie, has been discussed and reviewed with the board, the peer reviewers, Conservation Commission, their peer reviewers, DPW, Fire Department, et cetera. So it would be difficult for me to go through all of those measures and comments. I feel like I wouldn't do it justice in one hearing, so I just, I can't. I'm sorry.
Hold on, Max.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Jamie, speaking to the King Street improvement study, we agreed with, in front of the council before you, to fund a study, to actually design a rotary style, or whatever, our traffic engineer, who is the best in Massachusetts, I believe, to come up with a study to fix that intersection. And we still stand by that, that contribution. And when we get to the point where we discuss the decision with the zoning board, which we expect is imminent, we will discuss that condition and the details of that. But yes, I have offered to fund a study to look at the design improvements, to help the town alleviate the conditions of that intersection, even though they exist with or without my project, and I'm not required to do so. So, yes.
Caroline.
All right. I apologize, we've moved on after my amendment, I had a couple more questions that I just wanted to get back to. So first of all, when you decreased in units, would you say that, like, the tax revenue that the town will receive, that number likely dropped, you know, perhaps even, you know, a little bit, but in relation to the number of units? Like, is that, is the town losing out on a little bit of, like, a little bit? I mean, I'll let you answer. Tax revenue, based on the 10-unit decrease?
I think, I can't discuss how that would impact an assessment, because I'm not an assessor, and I don't know how your assessor's department assesses property, every town's are different. But 10 units is a pretty minimal difference, I would say. However, for me, it meant, actually means a lot for my side of the equation. I had the right, per the original support, to go up to 264. I went down, as a show of good faith, working with the board, working with the neighbors, to get to a parking ratio that worked for the board. The board wanted a very high parking ratio in the beginning, I think it was 174. The, originally, council talked about a 135. When I got to the board, we went back and forth, just like these issues are solved during a comprehensive permit process, many of them. And this was just one of the many. We submitted studies, we brought in expert testimony, we heard from the town council before you, who wrote in a letter and gave their feedback and said, "Hey, less parking, go back to a concept that we supported from the beginning." That's what we did. So what's before you, what's before the board, I'm sorry for approval, is, again, a concept extremely consistent with the concept that they supported, but just better, because there's additional enhancements and concessions that we've offered.
All right. I apologize, I think you took that in a slightly different direction, I left it open-ended, so I'm going to come back. But I will say, I know that there is still issues with parking, right? Like, there is a whole section that they say doesn't have enough parking by one of the, one of the buildings, right? And so I know that that is still an issue. It hasn't, at least, I think as of yesterday, it hadn't been ironed out, maybe I've missed some things since then. But my point about the tax revenue was that your original application said that the town could expect $650,000 in tax revenue, not closer to a million. And then it also said that, and this is, again, based off of 264 units, but also expected about 51 schoolchildren, so there is, you know, a significant burden on the, on our school infrastructure. I believe that it costs approximately $11,000 to $13,000 per student in our schools, that's kind of what we figured out. Of course, it's not, you know, it's not like one kid comes in and it's $13,000, but if you add 50 kids, you need at least two teachers, probably that's two classes worth. There's other, other expenses there. So I don't see that the tax revenue we get from all this. I also believe that there were 205 expected emergency calls per year, based on that original application, so I feel like whatever excess tax revenue we get from, after 650, minus the schoolchildren, then there's 205 emergency calls that our emergency services have to deal with, so I think that might, there might go the rest of our tax revenue. Oh, did you want to say something? Or just, okay.
No, go ahead.
So that was a point that I wanted to make. I know there's, there's some other things, the wetlands, I believe, the town requires a two-to-one remediation there, right? And you couldn't do that, so you're now saying it's plus or minus one-to-one, which seems like it might be less than half of what the town requires, so that's a concern. I, sorry, I have just a couple more points. I wanted to ask, we've said that decreasing in units is not a material change, or not a significant change, and I would agree, I'd say if everything comes down, then that is, you know, not a significant change. But when the size of one building goes up, if there goes from three floors to four floors, or it increases in size, I'm not sure it's, everything is coming down anymore. I think there's kind of ups and downs, and I think that would be considered a, I mean, I'm not, I'm not an expert, but it seems like it would at least be something that could be a substantial change. Two more things, commercial two uses, so if this, if we reject this, and this project no longer goes through, with the area zoned commercial two, I just want to say, these are the things that are allowed. So we're allowed single-family homes, two-family homes, and general retail stores and shops, personal service businesses like salons, dry cleaners, restaurants that sit down and fast food, banks and financial institutions, and business and professional offices, those are things that are permitted by right. Then there are things that are, require a special permit, like gasoline stations, auto repair shops, car washes, vehicle sales, dealerships, light industrial, commercial, again, special permit, warehouses and distribution facilities, light manufacturing or assembly, shared-use commercial kitchen. And then there's also, by special permit, hotels or motels, health clubs, gyms, recreational facilities, I think that's maybe not a special permit, and mixed-use developments. So my point in all this is that if this doesn't go through, then we do have a possibility of getting something significantly different. I would say, though, that many of those things, I don't, I mean, I don't think anyone's going to be spending the amount of money to buy this, you know, 15 acres to put in a car wash. So I don't think that we would be, you know, only getting the tax revenue for a car wash there. I would think that it would most likely end up being a mixed-use development, perhaps even a shopping center. So it's something to consider. If the butters, the neighbors, don't like this, this apartment complex, would they prefer to have, you know, this, you know, shopping center there? I don't know, I can't answer that. But, but I will say that some of the, you know, the bigger things, I know that Administrator Helen was saying, "Oh, you could end up with manufacturing there." And I guess that's true, but it would require a special permit, so we'd be probably less likely to end up with that. And my very last point, and then I will stop talking, is, you know, as we're talking about, you know, if we, if we reject this, if we rescind our approval, then what comes next? Is it going to open us up to liability? I guess I'm just confused there, because I've now heard you all say that it's not going to change anything, that if we rescind our approval, then it doesn't matter, because you guys keep going, it'll, it'll go through, we don't need a new project eligibility letter, you don't have to do any of this, but you're then, at the same time, you're also saying, "Well, if we rescind this, then, you know, that you'll have to get back your investment, and, you know, there might be a lawsuit." And so I'm just, I guess I just don't understand whether you actually believe that we have the capability of, of stopping this project, because I guess if, if there's, you're saying that there's, you know, the risk of lawsuit, then it sounds like we do have the power to possibly stop it by rescinding our approval. And, oh, this was, this one was actually my last point. I think that even if it means, this is to councillor Cormier Ledger's point, even if we don't have the capability of doing anything, even if this becomes a demonstrative vote, I feel like one of the, one of the reasons that we have a very nearly new council up here is because there was a lot of concern that residents weren't feeling heard by previous town officials. And I feel like, even if this vote does not stop the project by making a demonstration to say, "Listen, we understand, we know that this is not something that you want, and even though we can't stop it, we're going to at least say, 'Well, we tried.'" And I think that that is something to consider for the council.
We're going to be here all night.
Well, I actually want, well, I just, I just have one question.
What's your question?
Sorry. So I just want to ask, through the chair, councillor LeBlanc, if we pause this discussion for, till the next meeting, and have that conversation you mentioned, are you actually open to that, or was that rhetorical?
First of all, that, first of all, that discussion, I think, is not going, is not happening in two weeks. So it's not, first of all, it's too much going on, it's Thanksgiving, we need to take an action tonight. So the answer, I think, I'm going to be a lawyer, to answer your question, it's not a rhetorical one, but in reality, it's not, it's not reality.
Let's put this to rest. So I'm going to go to the citizens now, but let's go to a couple people.
Joel Doreco here, 72-year U.A. The three of the new councillors. I was a town councillor here for 10 years in the 90s, and then I retired from that and went on the Keller Sullivan Building Committee for another six years. In 1996, we were misinformed by a former building inspector that Nextel was a public service corporation, and without a public hearing, they put a cell phone tower up in a residential zone off of Skyline Drive, up off of Lincoln Street. And we put our trusty town attorney on it, Mark Lanza, who I strongly recommend, and we found out that Nextel was not a public service corporation. And that's the one and only cell phone tower that ever came down in Massachusetts, and it was done here. We put our foot down. And a year later, ANP, American National Power, was putting a power plant in across from Maple Gate Country Club.
That's right.
And we put the stop to that for a little bit, because of the volatile organic compounds that were going to come out of the stack, along with the formaldehyde, because the wind blows from west to east, and we didn't want it to land on our town. We made them put scrubbers on the stack, and in the end, we got them to give us $7 million. They gave us $7 million, and Jeff Nutting was able to do that. Now, I've been voting in this town since 1969, over 55 years. This project is the most undesirable project that has ever come to fruition in this community. People filled this room multiple times and told the prior council, "We don't want it because of this, because of that, because of this, because of that." You can't name five things that gives a benefit to this town. Now, he's right about 900,000, Station 117. I did a letter to the editor in The Observer a year and a half ago, and it brought in 875,000. And if you divide that by 255 units, each apartment brings in $3,500 a year. It's nothing. Two-bedroom condominiums bring in 7,000, 8,000, 9,000. The ones down across the country club bring in $10,000 a year. That's the kind of revenue that Jamie wants, not apartments. And I want to mention something. Safe Harbor got botched.
Yes, that's right.
It got botched. And he didn't try to cure it. And I'm so angry that he didn't try to cure it, that Safe Harbor. We would not be here right now. You don't understand the people of Franklin. Alan Earl's newspaper, The Observer, 1,300 people got on it, and out of the 1,300, 94% said, "We don't want it." Gene Grella got 900 signatures. Nobody wants it. 264 units is going to give you over 400 cars.
There you go.
You think that road can handle that?
How many kids in the school system?
50, times 12,000. So in the end, the revenue ends up being 300,000. So, you know, I'm sorry, Jamie, but, now, there's a, there's a, there's a letter here from Caitlin Loftus, and she responds in red ink, and she says that if the town withdraws, and it came in on November 17th, it's one of the handouts here.
November 1st.
And she works, she works at the state, the same office that the other lawyer said, "Because we changed councils, that doesn't hold water." Well, the reason isn't because, because you got four stories, you got four stories, you got four stories, you was three stories, and then you got a bigger building. So that's the word substantial. And if you look up in Blacks Law Dictionary, you can get the what substantial is. So she said that he has to start over if the town decides they don't want it in the midstream, and right now, we're in midstream. So I hope, and I appreciate, the people of Franklin put you here, and three that voted for it got shown the door, didn't they? So this is where we are. I appreciate your votes.
Just name and add.
Gary Love, 39, Redgate Lane. I just have a couple comments, really. I'm not going to go through why people don't want it, we've expressed that a million times, but I will make one comment, it's not just the butters who don't want this, it is the town. It's 254 units, that's too dense. I am an abutter, so I thought I better say that. A lot of comments, a lot of discussion, and it's, some of this is over my head, but there's a lot with people's own vantage points. And I just want to point that out, because I'm going to give my two cents worth. And it's all about trust and partnership, which we talked about before. The legal issues going on here, I have asked for legal opinion, our own town's legal opinion multiple times, and some of it's now just finally trickling down. multiple times, and some of it's now just finally trickling down. I heard a comment that, I think it was from over here, that the HAC will overrule the ZBA potentially and so forth. I've asked multiple times. In the handbook, it says, if we're over the 10%, and we talked about 10%, and yes, it could fluctuate, but we're at 10%, and that's the key right now. Whether we go up or down, if we start going down, there could be other projects that will have to be to figure something out. So the fear of the 10% is a vantage point. We're looking at it now. The handbook says the HAC cannot overrule. Could be wrong. I haven't gotten a legal opinion on that, but that's exactly what it says. The better-suited projects that we're talking about for the town, we think, could be there. As far as what's being done for the abutters, and I think Sue Rapp is going to talk, and she's been, has some very specific discussions on that, but I heard it again tonight, what we haven't gotten to that stage yet. I've seen very, very little concrete expenditures, capital expenditures, and work that is going to really be done and accomplished for the abutters and for the town. There's things like, oh, we'll look at the traffic. Well, you're right, Jamie. You've said that millions of times, and I bring it up again. Everyone's saying, it really can't be done. And if something can be done, it's going to be 10 years from now, so that's what we're going to live with. And I think the developer is talking about design, not fixing it, not putting a rotor again, okay? So it's a perspective again. The heights, the number of buildings, one was dropped. The number of units stayed the same. Now we're talking, you know, 10 units less, four tenths of 1% less. I'm just putting it, expanding the zone. I heard in one of the meetings, 33%. We've expanded the zone. All right, well, that's from 30 feet to 40 feet. So bottom line, I think it's an awful lot of perceptions here, and the building changes were because of parking, not because of abutters, or not because of what the town wanted. And sometimes you just finally get to a point of, I don't know all the rules, but sometimes you just say, you know, it's time to fight. It's time to do something, and I think the town would support that and support some of the money for that, too, because that's what the town wants.
Take one more, and then we're going to move on. She was already up, Mark. I'm taking one more, and then we're moving on. Do you all want to hear any opposing views?
We're closing arguments.
I just said so.
All right. Maritoma.
Susan Rapp.
Please, I like you. Go ahead.
Okay.
Name and address.
Yep, Susan Rapp, 40, Redgate Lane. Congratulations on being elected. I did send a letter of concern yesterday, and I appreciate all the feedback and comments and responses from you. Just to be clear, you know, we talked about, we keep talking about this buffer for the abutters. We're talking about 30 feet, now 40 feet, which is like from me to that counselor. That is for a three- and a four-story building and a parking lot next to my single-family home. If you all leave here on 140 and you see another member of Franklin's house that is on the corner of Lewis and that Taj, too, it's three stories on top of the home. That's what my home would look like. I can't understand that. I've lived here my whole life. So, you know, I know, it's interesting, because I had a meeting with A.J. on Friday, and during that meeting, we have been talking about this vinyl fence for almost two years. And A.J. said to me, I always said it was going to be a fence, it is actually a chain link fence. It is not a vinyl fence. We've been talking about this row of trees that would go in front of the fence to hide from my backyard, because my backyard is wide open. He had said, no, it is not a row of trees. It's going to be randomly placed trees. So I'm not sure in the last five days how the fence situation has now changed, but that is news to me. So thank you for that information. And then I just wanted to just say that I'm concerned. The project at its current proposal raises significant concerns regarding the scale and substantial number of waivers requested and its potential negative impact on the community. The environmental impact, the proposed development proximity to the wetlands and sensitive water resources is a major issue. The project waivers, the project requires numerous waivers from established town bylaws and zoning regulations. The sheer number of requests and variations suggests that the project isn't the right fit to meet the community's established standards. The scale and scope, the size and of the proposed complex is simply too large for that lot. That size is so small, which is why it's in my backyard, because he will not lessen the amount of apartments. And then the lack of resident support. A significant portion of the residents do not support the project, with hundreds signing in the petition, hundreds attending these meetings and writing the letters of concern. So we please want you to just consider rescinding your support. That, by rescinding your support as the town council, might help the ZBA say, hey, if the town council isn't on board with this, for all these reasons, over 30 variances, maybe that would help them decide. Because the ZBA, there's three members that are going to be voting on this, and only two have to say yes. That is a lot of power for two people to have. So that is what scares us as residents of Franklin. So thank you for your time.
Do I have your permission? Chairman Delorko? Thank you. Mark Mini-Kelly, 31, Longfellow Drive in Franklin. Thank you, Chairman Delorko, Town Councilors, Administrator Helen. As a member of Franklin's Affordable Housing Organization, Ben for Franklin, I continue to support the 444 East Central Street project. Let me explain why. Ask yourself, are there affordable options for people to buy or rent in Franklin today? The honest answer is no. We need more affordable forms of housing in Franklin. This project, can you hear me? This project would add 62 to 65 units to Franklin's real inventory of affordable units. This project will add hundreds of thousands of dollars of tax revenue to Franklin each and every year, with minimal added costs or demands for services. The Station 117, thank you. The Station 117 Apartments on Dean Street, which contains a similar number of units, 257 apartments, generates roughly $875,000 of annual property tax revenues. Although Station 117 is not a direct comparison to this project, it shows the scale of expected revenues. Regarding costs, a small number of schoolchildren added across multiple grades of our schools will not add significant actual cost to the school system. Costs such as street plowing, sanding, drainage, water and sewer services are all borne by the property owner, not the town. In future budget years, you'll be asked to make significant cuts, given our budget deficit. Removing this project from development pipeline is not a fiscally responsible choice. I believe a vibrant community includes a balance of owned and rental housing, as well as a variety of housing types. It's not only, this not only adds the affordable, to the affordable housing landscape, but it supports young adults starting out, older residents who are downsizing, and many other good people who need more housing options. Most, if not all, of the changes made to this development plan were made at the request of either town council, ZBA, or project neighbors. The developer should not be penalized for trying to satisfy these bodies. If so, I would be concerned about the legal exposure of doing so. Accordingly, I request that you vote to continue to support this project. Express concerns, give the developer feedback, but do not invite the opportunity for expensive legal costs to this town. It's a complex set of details to sort through. If you're not yet fully prepared for this vote, I suggest a vote of abstain is a reasonable option. Thank you.
John Johnson, 23, Northern Spy Road. You know, just speaking on behalf of the citizens again, you know, everyone's made it very clear, the citizens don't want this development to happen. It's a friendly 40B. So the zoning board appeals, all they need is the 10% rule of the affordable housing in Franklin, which we meet, check, it could be denied, end of story. So I ask you to please rescind your vote in support of this.
All right. All right. Just one quick comment. First of all, when you say 40B, and you say affordable, and you want to downsize, I want to downsize, but I'm not going to go to an apartment complex and pay $2,500 a month. And I hate, and I've said it in the past for the last 14 years, it's not affordable. It's middle-class at best. At best. If it was affordable, I'd probably be more for it, but obviously, I voted no for it before, and I don't know who does the traffic studies around here, but whoever does it should be fired. Because I drive an oil truck in this town, and there's no way you can get around down here at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. I got to go to Prospect Street. My truck is parked up there. I got to go through Rentham, down Chestnut Street to go over there, and I get there 10 minutes quicker than if I go down 140. So. If we, yeah, if we yes or no vote, if we, I was just going to do that again, because I think we're all confused. If we vote yes on this resolution as amended, that means we withdraw, right? If we vote no, it stays the same.
Correct.
Okay, so.
Before you take a vote, Mr. Chair, if I, just briefly may, just to perhaps offer a suggestion to the councilors, there's been a lot of discussion tonight, both by yourselves, town manager, town council. We appreciate you giving us the opportunity to address you and present our perspective. And we really appreciate the citizens coming out. It's impressive that everybody's out here almost 10 o'clock at night. The sentiment that's been expressed from many sides, I would say, is some displeasure with the project. You all have voiced your concerns about the project, and what I would suggest to you tonight is that you needn't necessarily take a vote, because to answer your question, Madam, to answer your question, Madam Counselor, our position is that the action of the board tonight, if you do vote to rescind your support, would be symbolic. The project will continue under a different subsidy program. So you all have expressed your position. We've heard your concerns, as we've heard concerns of others. What I think is important also to note is that while the sentiment in the room is, with one exception from the citizens, overwhelmingly negative, there's statistical evidence that these sorts of public hearings are overwhelmingly attended and participated in by project opponents in the case of affordable housing. There's lots of residents of the 30-plus-thousand residents of Franklin who didn't come out tonight to voice their support of the project. There's also, if I may, over 200 families who will call Franklin home, who aren't here tonight to speak in support of this project and creation of affordable housing and market rate housing. And I accept your point, Mr. Chair. It is, it is true that the rents in these kind of projects, it's high. It's not, it's not cheap. But providing additional housing units, whether it's market rate, subsidized, that raises the water level and makes affordable housing possible through supply and demand. It's a market solution, and 40B, for better or for worse, has been the most, by far, successful housing production tool for municipalities and developers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the last 60 years. It's not even close. So again, we appreciate your time and allowing us to present to you tonight.
Okay. Clark will take roll call.
All right. I don't have to read it again, right?
No.
Do I have to, with the amendment, or?
No, you're good. Move it, and just to know Counselor Cromer Ledger is off.
Oh, he is?
Yeah, so he's.
But let's still, let's still do a roll call.
He's gone?
He's not on the call. He texted and said he's.
Okay.
Let's still do a roll call.
All right. So the vote is now to?
Withdraw.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, on resolution, yeah, thank you, on resolution 2573.
Resolution to approve, resolution 2573 as amended.
As amended, yes. All right. We'll surrender this end. Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Morongella?
No.
Counselor Calaway-Trippe?
Yes.
Counselor Ujuku? Counselor Griffith? Yes. Chairman Delorko?
Yes.
I'm going to take a two-minute recess, and we'll get to it.
I want to see it. John, he knows to pass.
I'm gonna take a two-minute recess, and we'll get to it.
John, he knows to pass. Oh, where's everyone?
This is the way it always is.
This is the rest of the chair, right?
Yeah, this is the way it always is.
You wanna know what you're doing?
Where'd everybody go?
I'm gonna call.
And these two guys showed up.
Now we need you, standing room.
So the town council meeting is back in order. Geez. I forgot where we were. Jesus. So we're gonna go, we're gonna move to Resolution 25-74, the 2/26 schedule of the town council meeting. Clark will read them.
Nope, yeah. I will. Do I have, do I have to?
Motion to waive the reading?
Seconded.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any?
Can. You've been watching some meetings, haven't you?
You can't second, so I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm losing it tonight.
It's only been four hours.
So we can vote on the motion. We don't, we don't have to take the roll call.
Can I have, sorry, I have one question.
Well, we're gonna discuss, we're gonna, we're only motioning the --
Oh, okay.
Reading.
The reading. We're gonna discuss the --
We vote on, we vote on not reading it?
We wave it.
We'll just wave the reading.
All right, apology.
And then, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna read the dates.
Okay.
But then we'll go to discussion. Because I have one too. So, all right. So we have our, we're moving to the town council schedule, Max.
Yes.
And so there's a motion on the floor to waive the reading. So we're gonna, we're gonna take a vote on that. We can go, we don't need a roll call vote. So.
Do I say, all in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
All opposed, I have.
All right, it's passed. All right, now we're going back to the resolution. Resolution 25-74. Does anyone have any dates that is, I mean, I do, but I just, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I was actually wondering about the office hours. There are certain dates that are typically scheduled the day after the town council meeting, and I was wondering if, for some of them, where it's possible, we could do it on the off week instead. And so I actually, if no one has any objection, I would move to substitute March 19th, April 16th, May 21st, June 18th.
Hold on, buddy. What did you say? March what, 19th? You just went.
Okay, I'll slow down.
Yeah, slow down a little bit.
I move to substitute March 19th, April 16th, May 21st.
Those are regular meeting nights.
These are office hours?
Yes, for the office hours.
But office hours aren't on this.
Yeah, they are. Office hours at the bottom. We're voting on everything. Office hours are on this.
Wait, is that, is that correct? Are we voting on office hours?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Just take it. Mr. Chairman, you're voting on the calendar of the town council. You're not voting on the senior center or the finance committee. We just put them there.
We can change them.
Yeah, we can move office hours. We don't need to vote on that.
We don't, right.
So these are just for our information?
Right. Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, why we do them on the third Thursday, which was a complete coincidence, we don't have to keep them there. The reason why we did them then is randomly, we booked office hours when the council started them, and Rep. Roy was doing his office hours, and seniors had Medicare versus Medicaid versus Mass Health and Loeb. So by being there at the same time, it actually helped constituents. We don't have to keep it on the third Thursday. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
But we can change that at any time. We don't have to.
The resolution is restricted to your meeting.
To your meeting.
Our meetings here, not the --
Correct.
That's what I'm trying.
Maybe just take up first the meeting calendar, and then if you want to change a couple of the senior center dates, we can do that.
That's what I, I agree with that.
But do we even have to do that tonight?
You don't even have to do it. You just need to tell me what dates you want to do.
Just vote on this and get that. I do have a, I do have an issue with one date.
Yep.
Which would be June 3rd. I'd try to make it, but it's my daughter's rehearsal party, so I don't think I'm gonna be able to make it.
You gotta go to that.
So if we could change that date, I would greatly appreciate that.
So the switch with the FinCom is June 10. So we'll do the council on June 10th, if that's okay with everybody, and then the FinCom will be on June 3rd. I just want to note that June 10th, there is a reason for this, just so everybody knows, because if there are layoffs at some point for the school department, they have a June 15th deadline, which means any budget revision would have to be done before June 15th so that they can get out notices of layoffs. So there is, there is a reason why those dates are somewhat the dates they are.
So people can look for new jobs.
No, no, it's a contractual.
It's a contractual obligation with teachers.
We know what the real reason is.
Is June 3rd, I mean, if it moves to June 3rd, sorry. If it moves to June 3rd, is that still fine?
I think he's proposing June 10th. So June 10th is okay.
But I thought we were, I thought we were worried about the FinCom meeting getting in before the 15th. No?
Oh, no.
Okay, okay.
So we're gonna move that to June 10th.
We'll just swap the finance committee, if that's okay with everybody else.
Do I have to make a, do I have to make an amendment to that?
No.
Or we just, okay.
Let's do it.
So everybody else is all set with the meetings? So I'll take a vote on that.
Well, you changed it from what it's printed as, so.
That's what I'm saying. Do I have to?
Yeah, even when we change.
Sure.
I moved to amend.
I moved to amend to the --
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passed. Now, move Resolution 25-74 as amended.
Second. No, no, you for asking for a motion. I move that.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passed. All right. Thank you. Resolution 25-75, gift acceptance, fire department $1,000, veteran service department $1,175. Clark will read the resolution.
Yep, yep. All right. Whereas the Franklin Fire Department and Veteran Services Department have received generous donations in the total amount of $2,175 and zero cents to be used at the discretion of each department as follows. Donation summary, Fire Department, $1,000. Donation will be used at the department's discretion toward the purchase of safety and other related equipment and/or to fund departmental programs. Veteran Services Department, $1,175. Donations to be used at the discretion of the Veteran Services Department through the Franklin Municipal Veterans Assistance Fund in support of local veterans and their families. List of all donors is included in the November 19th, 2025 Town Council Meeting Agenda Packet. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Franklin, on behalf of the Franklin Fire Department and Veteran Services Department, gratefully accepts these generous donations to be used at the discretion of each department for the purposes noted above. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 25-75.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just, I will say thank you to everyone that donated, obviously. They keep coming up. They always show up. So thank you. God bless. So, all in favor? Aye. Motion passed. Town administrators report.
I don't have anything specific, but just hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
No subcommittee meetings. Future agenda items. Counselor Malloy.
Just put it out there for some discussion as we get to budget season. Maybe a Chapter 70 review. Jamie, you and I spoke about that in your office last week. Might be good to get a primer or a refresher on how Chapter 70 works and where all that money comes from.
Maybe we can call somebody in, Jeff Roy or someone like that. Sure.
That's it.
I know that happens with the finance committee, so maybe, maybe that's something that you do as a joint session.
Yeah, sure. Get somebody from the state too. Well, I think it's the school business that's driving it too.
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Ju.
I guess on the topic of budget, I know I had mentioned before, I'd love to have a, on the agenda, a session where we go over the five-year forecast.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Just two things. One, I love what the town departments did today. I just wish we did that more formally, that they had not just stand here for three minutes or try and cram it in. Let's give them their due in front. If they want to put, they're more than happy to be here at 6:00 at night. I'm more than happy to let them talk about what they do for the community. The second thing is, similar to that, I know that prior, the prior council, and this happened two times, the school committee has come during citizens' comments. I'd like to make that a more formal kind of thing in the, in the agenda, so that way we have an opportunity to actually engage in a conversation with them. I was gonna actually run that by you first, Counsel.
Well, I was thinking myself, I was, I was thinking of moving him to --
Just an agenda item? Just, we can talk about that.
Agenda items, or I could put him as --
Announcements from the chair.
Announcements from the chair. I could just do that.
Something that allows us to have an engaging conversation, so it's not one-way. Unfortunately, when David speaks, we cannot engage, and I think as part of this effort, again, I say this because the same effort was here 20 years ago. The school committee and the, this is, this is an age-old problem. It's, it's like, I haven't, it's like, it's 20 years, it's like. I would just love to have that conversation with them sitting in that chair, and we could ask questions back and forth, and it will become a dialogue that I think will help move the process along. That's all for now.
You're gonna have to find some way to identify among the agenda.
That's what I --
You can't just do, that's why you can't talk back and forth because there's no notice.
There's no notice. So we'll have to find a way. You guys can figure it out. Max, you wanna go?
Nothing at this time.
Okay.
Nothing at this time.
Carol?
I have one thing. The, I, I'd like to suggest, putting on the agenda to have a discussion about this, perhaps doing a, an initiative where the town council does maybe a quarterly service project. So we have lots of really, really worthy organizations in this town that do a lot of good things, and as we are here because we are, you know, trying to serve our community, I thought that would be perhaps another good way to, you know, do some physical service for our community, not just administrative. And so I'd, you know, love to discuss the possibility of that. It could be something at the food pantry, or, you know, finding out, finding out if there are opportunities in these organizations for us to do something there. It would be, I propose it would be an optional thing, but we could set it up for once a quarter where we could, and I've looked, it doesn't violate any open meeting laws as long as we do not discuss business there. So that's, that's the only thing I have.
Sounds like a communication liaison person.
Counselor, you go. No, I just, you know, second some of the things that Counsel LeBlanc had said. That's all, but nothing new for me.
Mr. Chair?
Can I? Oh, what? Oh, no, I just had, I did have an item, actually, after all. I just, I was talking to Town Administrator, Town Administrator about an issue regarding the assessor's office, regarding personal property, and I just was wondering if we could work together to put that on the agenda in the future, because the tax rate hearing is gonna be on December 3rd, which is also my birthday, so.
All right.
Just my, my one comment, you know, echoing what Mr. Counselor LeBlanc said, but also vice versa. It might not be a bad idea for us to have a town council rep at the, liaison at the school committee meetings.
I happen to know the new chair, and I happen to know that that is something that he has discussed with the school committee, is trying to see if there's a way that members of the town council, you know, even if it's just a couple at a time, can be invited into the school committee meetings to have those back and forth.
We can go anytime. They can come here too, anytime, too.
Sort of like, formal.
Make it formal.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's me. Jamie, this 40B thing is so bad, is there any way you can put it on an agenda? We, why don't we put something together so we can look into this? Maybe we can change something or look at something. I don't know. You know what I mean?
On the state?
Well, no, the town. Can we get something to do with the friendly 40Bs? Is nothing we can do?
I mean, you guys all know, I mean, that you can approve the staff policy, which is already in effect, because it's where it is. I think there are other viewpoints that the board may have about friendly 40Bs that could get complicated, but in my view, and I said this in November 2024, when I revised the policy, the one issue people have are large rental apartment complexes. And so getting into anything outside of that seems to be deviating away from what we've been hearing for a year. It just seems to be the easy free throw. But, I mean, if you can codify the policy, you guys tabled it a couple times in the last council, but if you want to do that, I'll put it on the agenda, but I do think if you're gonna get into a deeper dive and make it more complicated, because I, right now, you can take friendly 40Bs as applications, as for sale units, but you just, I just prohibited large rental buildings. So if you want to put it on the extra agenda, I think it's an easy, it's a layup.
I just didn't know anybody here thought that they wanted to hear about it.
Yeah.
No, I think so. I mentioned it last week to kind of revisit the policy itself, aside from what you've got adopted, but I think us codifying or clearly saying something that we want to express, whether it's just with rental, large complex, large rental complexes, I think we should own it and.
Yeah, agree. But ultimately having, you know, and clearly stating, hey, this is our, I don't know, vision, goal, whatever, like, we need to actually outline that before these things come, so that we don't get into this situation.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Agreed.
You know, and we can't, and it's gonna be a lot easier to do that if we, if we have that session where it's like, hey, this is, this is.
This is what I'm thinking, you know.
But I, I don't want to be in that situation again. That's not, I don't think any of us do.
No, I've been in it twice, and I didn't want to be. You know what I mean? So, yeah. But, yeah, no, no problem. That's why, that's why I was thinking of bringing it up, because I think, again, maybe more education helps everybody, you know what I mean? But, all right, we'll have to go to Counsel of Commons. Counsel LeBlanc?
Yeah, just two quick things. I, there are obviously two things that are really passionate, what I'm seeing on the council, one is economic development and one is affordable.
Housing.
Housing. Obviously, affordable housing. We had a great conversation about that tonight. We'll talk about that more. But from an economic development standpoint, I had an, I had an opportunity to meet with Lisa Piani from the Downtown Partnership last week, and to learn more about what's going on downtown. And I'm gonna take, probably once a month, and I'm reaching out to businesses, if you want to contact me, I'm gonna use this as a, as a advertisement for you. I had the chance, I never walked into the Little Shop of Olive Oils, never. Never ever walked into it. And heard that it moved from the back to the front. Walked into it last week, and I go, that's a fantastic shop.
It's awesome. It really is, Mike.
I mean, I drove by it a million times, tucked in the corner, never walked into it, but when you walk into it, it's a fantastic shop. So all I can say is, during the holidays, visit the Little Shop of Olive Oils and buy some olive oil and buy some vinegar, and it's a wonderful place to shop.
It really is.
So reach out to me, and I'll give you a five minute, I'll give you a 15-second commercial in council meetings. So that's it. Thank you. Oh, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Thank you.
Thanks. Max?
Yes, I wanted to thank all the citizens for their comments tonight. I also wanted to let the public know, we're starting to work together more as a team. I had a lovely time grabbing a bite with Councilors Malloy, Guerilla, and Chair Delorko, uh, individually, each individually, and we're, we're starting to build that foundation for us to work together going forward. Um, so I, I just wanna appreciate, uh, starting to bond a little bit more as a team, and, uh, and, um, I, I also got the pleasure of attending the, um, Historic World Museum. They had a string quartet, which is really, uh, well-attended, where they had a pack, they were like the standing room only, and so many people there, as well as the interfaith ser, there was an interfaith service at U M C, uh, that had all the different denominations and religious groups, uh, were attending as well, and that was very powerful service. Uh, so, uh, just trying to get involved and, um, represent the council. So, thank you.
Counsel Calhoun, trip?
Um, basically, um, gonna mirror a little bit, um, what was already said. Thank you to the residents who all came out. Never seen this place so packed. I'm parked at the juice bar. Um, I never, I never drove in here, and there was no spots, so that was amazing. Um, I hope that with everything that happened tonight, residents realize we don't, we are listening. Um, and I just wanna wish everyone really a happy Thanksgiving. It's been a crazy, crazy ride. Let's all just take the time and enjoy the holidays, spend it with our families and our loved ones, and just be grateful. Um, we can't fix everything in a day. So, um, we'll start after Thanksgiving. But not on Black Friday, 'cause I don't go out of the house. That's it.
Counsel Malloy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in addition to all the Thanksgiving wishes, of course, I would add to that, but I did wanna thank the, uh, the three citizens who stepped up to help on those committees, Elizabeth, Jennifer, and Brandon. Thank you to them for taking the time to, to help. I wanna congratulate the, uh, high school's girl, the high school girls volleyball team. They won the state championship, which I thought was awesome. Anytime a team can do that, it's just great. And the soccer team is, uh, on track for a state championship, I think, on Saturday as well, so good luck to them.
Cheerleaders too?
Cheerleaders, yep. They did great. And, um, yeah, just looking forward to continuing on our work, and after a long night, I think we'll just leave it at that for right now.
Counsel Juco?
Um, just to add to, uh, Counsel Malloy's comment, I'll, I'll, I'll throw one out for, uh, for field hockey, who plays second as well. That's pretty impressive, apparently playing a powerhouse. Um, you know, beyond that, I, I just wanna say that, uh, you know, I, I also, you know, wanna thank people who are, who are here today, the, the citizens that we heard from, uh, the citizens who emailed and, you know, both their positive and, you know, and, and negative concerns, just, you know, that communication makes a difference. I, I, I'm, you know, it certainly moved where my mind was at when I first walked into the room, then, uh, then a little bit later. There, these are complicated situat, you know, complicated issues, and we just have to consider a number of different things. Now, that said, I also wanna say thank you to, you know, I know it's their job, but, but to the representatives, the proponents of, of, uh, for forty B, who, of, of the, of the build that were here, and, you know, tried to answer our questions. These are not easy questions. They're not getting them in advance. They're just kind of, you know, i- i- in the spotlight and, and forced to, to respond. Um, and that's, that's difficult for anyone. So,
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I, I appreciated the fact that they were here and at least, you know, uh, and certainly tried to defend their, their stance, and again, uh, just the people who come up and, and shared their feelings, both on the things that are on the agenda, as well as the ones that are not, and citizens' comments. That's a hard thing to do. I really appreciated it, and really appreciated hearing your voice. That's all.
Thank you. Counsel Griffin?
Um, so, I, it's been said. I, there's so many, so many people that have want, want to be engaged in the way we do things in town, and I think we have seen that through emails and letters, and people coming, um, to the meetings, and people standing up at the microphone. Um, and I'm just, I'm so grateful to see that level of engagement, whether their views were reflective of the end results or not. Um, the only time, other time I've seen this room this busy was during the redistricting of the schools, and so, I mean, it was great to see how, how many people wanted to come and talk. Um, I wanted to make, um, a couple of comments, and now that mic's on me, I've forgetting them. Um, one thing I wanted to say is, um, I wanted to put out another comment about the, um, the coat drive, because it is getting very cold, and I know that sometimes when we have those comments at the very beginning, they get lost, right? Everyone's thinking about what's coming up later. Um, that's, that's a huge thing. Um, I know that I will be going into my attic, not tonight, too late, um, this weekend, and, and looking for my kids', you know, coats that are too small, so, too small and things that, coats that are too small for me, that I keep holding on, thinking, oh, I'm gonna fit in them again. But, um, so that's
Me too, kid.
So, that, I mean, that's a, um, a really important issue, and I wanted to make another comment of that. Um, I also wanted to mention the Franklin Food Pantry. Um, they have their, um, their turkey, their turkey trot, I think, on Thanksgiving morning. Um, that's a, um, really good initiative there. Also, uh, they've been getting food for the last several, um, weeks to give out holiday meals, and they may have already given out the holiday meals, or maybe that's going through this week, but, so there's a lot of
People.
Families, yeah, families in our, um, and individuals in our community and in nearby communities that are, um, gonna be enjoying a holiday meal because of the donations that the food pantry receives, um, money and food. So, um, that's a really, um, just wanted to give them a shout-out. I know that Tina Powderly was here earlier, but
She gave her shout-out.
Incredible, yeah, incredible work there. Um, and then, lastly, I wanted to just address, um, to Mr. Mina Kelly's point about rental, um, levels in Franklin. Um, we're, like, I, I looked this up, and forgive me if my chat G P T numbers are not exactly accurate, but I believe that Franklin has about eighteen or nineteen percent rental, um, to homeownership levels. Um, Massachusetts in general is thirty-six percent, I think. Um, most of the towns nearby are somewhere closer to that thirty to thirty-three percent. I think Medway is the only other one that's, um, comparable. I think it's maybe eighteen percent there. Um, I think it is, there is a need for it in Massachusetts in general, um, having, this is, in Franklin, this is the first time I've been a homeowner. I have rented since several places, and it is something that is a need for, um, young professionals, for, you know, single people who may not need a home, for young families. Uh, and while huge apartment complexes are maybe not the best way, you know, rental condominium, uh, like townhouses, um, I've rented those, those are great options for, um, for families and for young professionals, or, um, or seniors who are downsizing, and I think it's worth, you know, keeping that in mind as we move forward and look at, um, possible future developments.
That's it?
That's it.
Alright, this is one of my favorite parts too, this meeting.
Yeah. You had a rest.
That's right. First of all, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and I wish you all a, a great Thanksgiving. Uh, second of all, I wanna speak to that, um, citizen comment about the rumors. Um, you know, I was just surprised hearing that, um, at least she, she thought that there were a couple of town council members who were participating in rumors. That's, um, that, as far as I know, that's not true, and, and there is no way that we want, um, or this town council, um, will participate in kind of spreading any rumors, false or otherwise. That's just not the way we work, and I know the folks here, and we're all, um, you know, invested in, in working well together, and also working with the school committee and, and the rest of the town. So, um, we will, you know, do our best to squash anything like that if we hear about it. Um, just a couple of, uh, other comments about the, um, and I heard people come up in the senior center worrying about the, um, you know, closing of the senior center. Absolutely not. Um, the senior center provides the vital role to this town. I think we all agree on that. Um, so, uh, we would never be looking at doing something like that, saying, I think, that Franklin would turn its grave if we tried to close the library, um, all places to close the library. Um, so, we hear you. Um, we, these are things that we believe in, these are institutions that we believe in, and, um, I just wanna say my support, and I think I speak for the rest of the council and the support of those institutions. Um, and that's, that's just it for me. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So, um, yeah, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and, uh, thanks for the, uh, I see you guys all out there. You guys are gonna have to get up early. I took the day off. I knew it was gonna be a bad one. I'm trying to use some of my vacation time before I retire, so I thought that tomorrow was a good day. Uh, so, uh, a couple of things. Um, I have to give a shout-out to Charlie Gation. He, uh, is a great guy. He sat here, he was the chairman of the Franklin Town Council, he was chairman of the finance committee. Uh, he was on a building committee, I think, too. He was very involved in the town. He owned a chicken farm. His family owned a chicken farm on Chester Street, and he lived on that. He was ninety-seven years old, passed away at ninety-seven years old, and he, I played golf with him for three years. He didn't play last year, but he was getting sick. He was getting ill. So, at ninety-five, he still beat me pretty bad. So, I mean, I'm just letting you know. So, but he was a good guy, and, uh, he was, he was very good to the town of Franklin, so my condolences go to his family. Um, and, um, just happy Thanksgiving, and everybody rest up. Let's, uh, getting into the holiday season, so let, let's be joyful, people. Let's, let's bring some joy. Yeah, so, so outside of that, we do have an executive session tonight, so, uh, executive session, collective bargaining, policeman patrolmen to discuss the tra, the strategy with respect to the collective bargaining. If an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
What are after? What you just read?
Did she have to read?
No, we have to take a vote on that.
Make a motion.
We have to make a motion.
Make a motion to go into an executive session?
Second.
For the per, yeah.
For the purpose of the, um, collective bargaining for the police patrol.
No, and the, and the, if, if the prejudice and the, and the chair has so
You have to read that.
And not resume an open session.
Okay.
I make a motion to go into executive session for collective bargaining for the police patrol to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
And not to resume an open session.
That's not there, but it should. We're not resuming that.
And we will not be resuming the public meeting.
Seconded.
Okay. Oh, roll call, yeah.
Alright.
Roll call on that.
Counsel Malloy?
Yes.
Counsel Juco?
Yes.
Counsel Griffith says yes. Counsel LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counsel Morin-Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun?
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun?
Yes.
Chairman Delorko?
Yes.